So, we are August 17th amended notice of agenda. Order supervisors, six o'clock. Call this meeting to order. Do we have a receipt of evidence?
Yes, the county board of supervisors, August 17th meeting notice and agenda was posted in the government center building in two places. Posted on the county website on August 6, 2021. It was published in a legal newspaper the week of August 9, 2021. In addition, on Friday, August 6, 2021, at 12:27 PM, the office of the county clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail. The notice of amended agenda was posted in the government center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice of meeting with any additional proposed resolutions were distributed to the supervisors and media via email or mail on Friday, August 13, 2021.
Joe, proper notice?
Yes, that is proper notice.
Thank you. Vocal?
Brad Olson.
Did get a phone call from him, but I couldn't answer it, so I'm guessing he's running late.
Doug Roddy.
Here.
Born Dahl.
Not here. He's excused.
Ms. Nelson. LeBlanc, here. Andrew. Mike Pritchard.
Here.
Jaren Kelly, here. Tim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Milton.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Brent Duncanson. Russ Arcand. John Bonner Price.
Here.
Joe Dublin.
Here.
Yeah, thirteen of them.
John, pledge of allegiance?
Tracy LeBlanc is gonna lead us in pledge allegiance and wanna congratulate Tracy for her years on the on the fair board. They set an all-time record this year.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America. One nation, without borders.
For finding points of interest, just notice it at the time. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I saw move as presented.
Second by Joe. Any discussion about the agenda?
Yeah. Item fourteen was to be presented by Ms. Malone, who could not make it tonight, so I would recommend that we postpone that to another time. That is her presentation on her monthly presentation. Yeah.
Joe don't wanna just step in and do it?
I can try if you wanna hear me muddle through, but I think it's better.
Oh, wait. No offense.
First and second in favor? Matters offered for adoption on consent agenda, do we have a motion and a second? Tracy, second by Kim. Any discussion? Yes, that's to Ranger Pritchard.
I don't think had any specific information of the resolution thirty-four twenty-one. I believe that's over four hundred acres. Does someone have just a brief comment about what that involved?
Either the chair or the chair wants to let Bob do it. Just quickly, Bob.
Yeah, good evening. That's resolution thirty-four twenty-one. That was a rezone from RA five to B three eight. It was approved by the town. There was a public first. That is for commercial firearms license.
To understand it's over four hundred acres?
Four.
Four. Or did I misread that?
Point four.
Point four one three acres.
Yeah. I'm sorry, then I had read that as four hundred.
I think the other one is forty-one twenty-one. That was a larger.
All right, so you're good?
Richard? The other one was only ten acres.
Mike, is that good?
Well, the other one was a larger one. Ten acres. This was ten acres.
That one again was a simple rezone from RA five, potential agriculture, to business commercial B two or campground. I think it'll have up to four events a year. Bud bond for trucks and these, if I recall correctly. That was also approved by the town. There's no utilities on the site and public hearing was
Thanks, Bob.
Oh, point four one three, okay, all right. I didn't see the point.
Any other discussion?
All right, thank you.
Being not all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same side? Gary. Public comments?
Do we have some public comments, Mr. Chair? Anybody that wants to come up?
Yeah, so one of the things I'd like to say during public comment, and just so we don't wait till the end, if anyone has if we're all on KFOs, again, that's good, that's fine, but Shabon, if you could ask the question there of show of hands or something, if you could, if anyone else is here for substance science KFO, I'd like to make sure everyone had an opportunity to talk, and I think last month I might have missed somebody that had some other issues, so I just wanna make sure. We got thirty minutes, three minutes for everybody. We're gonna keep the time right on, so just come on up, tell us who you are, what town you're from, and we'll get public comment underway.
Does anybody have anything that's not KFO related first? Nope.
What do you mean, we sit here?
Oh, you can stand, you can sit. State your name and where you're from.
David Klopp. I live on Bone Lake in Luck, Wisconsin. I've had my family's been in Polk County for well over a hundred years. I've got generations in the graveyard. We've taken, we've been good stewards of our water and our environment. We do not think that this is fair to allow these Chinese operators to come in here under a host of different names. It's a show game. They're not being straight-up shooters and come in here and risk what we love so much about Polk County and Burnett County, which is our clean water and our water, our air, our trout streams, our lakes. Tourism is by far the thing that's ready to go. I mean, we've been cooped up with COVID. We're dying to come to the North Woods. Lake property is selling at an all-time high. People are trying to get to the North Woods and they got an open wallet, they're ready to come up here to Polk County and spend it. And doggone it, they don't wanna come up here and hang out with some hog factory or one of these feeder feeder plants. It's just bad for business. It just doesn't go well with tourism. And I came down here tonight, I feel very strongly about this, and I think you ought to pass what Bayfield has done. They've gotten rid of this problem up there. The Smithfield operator, they're just you know, they're the Communist Party of China. They, they're not like us as far as the rules they play with their business practices. We know the intellectual property law they deal with. We know what they do with dog food, what's in it. The drywall, what's in the drywall they send us, the fentanyl they send us. I mean, these are not good players to be in business with, so I just, I just wanna come down here and thank you tonight for listening to my comments. And I hope you pass what Bayfield does. Thank you very much.
Yeah, hey, David, thank you for showing up here tonight, and I hope a lot of the public comments stick around, cuz I think we're gonna have a discussion and it might just help you guys understand everything, and you can hear the other side tonight, too. A lot of times we get public comment, then everyone leaves, and I think it'd be good if you guys could stick around for the whole show. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Katie Brown. I live in Bone Lake Township. I'm the town chair there. Our town board is extremely opposed to KFOs. We are charged, as you are, to be stewards of the lakes and the waters of this county, and this is for generations to go. Once these things come in, they're gonna be really hard to get out. I was thinking on my way here about what about that article in the paper that says it was a giant manure spill, got into Trade River, got into Trade Lake, got in the St. Croix River. It's too late then. I appreciate you guys' resolution to insist that the state take care of this, but I think with our last governor, we saw that he didn't staff these parts of the DNR that are charged with regulating these things. And it's all about business to them, and so they're gonna, they're gonna starve out the DNR help so that there isn't enough people to look after them, and then to pass the buck on to the state, I don't think is a good idea. I think we need to keep this local control here, just like Bayfield has done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Thank you. I'm Carl Wicklin. I live in town of Milltown. Been a lifelong resident of Polk and Burnett County, so there is some exotic background there, I guess. Our, our family is a family of farmers going way back. I understand the the economic problems there. I do not understand a KFO to be any kind of solution to it. I very much appreciate the, the resolution to have the DNR be fully funded and enforcement of this, but we can point to so many examples where that hasn't happened, whether because of the change of administration or for whatever other reasons. We need to maintain local control on this. Bayfield County's done it as well as several others. And I urge the board here to adopt that language that Bayfield County has done successfully to maintain our local control, to protect our resources that frankly, once they're gone, there is no getting it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
My name is Jim Mitchell. We have, we have property in Georgetown Township and that's for twenty-seven years now. I mean, I'm gonna ask y'all, have any of you been to China? Have anybody had to try to breathe the air there? Look at the rivers, you can just walk across them? They don't care about anybody but China. They don't care about us. They don't care about anything but their profits and their country. And we, you, trust me, you don't want anything like that here in Polk County.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Chris Towe. I live in Village Frederick. I spoke at your last meeting about the love that the activists and others that came here have for the county and region, and I also offered a few ideas of actions you could take as a county board. And I'm glad to see that your agenda today has a resolution calling on the state to adequately fund the DNR, which was one of those recommendations. It's a first draft, and so I'm here to offer an addition to it and a subtraction. So first, while it calls on the state to adequately fund the DNR, it doesn't establish the fact that we believe the DNR is currently underfunded, which other commenter spoke to. This is a necessary part of the argument, since without that fact, the state leaders can just ignore us by saying it's already funded enough. The other point to make is that there's an unnecessary part in the argument, which is on lines twenty-two to twenty-three and then twenty-eight and twenty-nine, where it states that the county has limitations in ability and authority. There is absolutely no need to undermine our own potential as a county in order to ask the state for help. Since these statements are irrelevant to the argument to fund the DNR, I suggest they be removed. That said, thank you for including facts that the mega farms can harm our air and water, that the DNR can be our allies, and most importantly, that one of the county board's duties is to protect the county's air and water. I look forward to seeing continued resolutions to take action on this issue, including an operations ordinance, something that, as others have mentioned, other counties have deemed in their authority. While there are currently no applications in the county for a KFO related to the hog operations and others, the sparks are flying, and we must take action before it turns into a fire. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name's Ashley. I am not a owner of land in the county, but I represent a group of people, a large group of people who
Excuse me, Ashley, where are you from?
I'm from, originally from the cities, I live in Polk County in East Farmington.
So you, you're from East Farmington?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And I represent a larger group of people who work the land and then trust that the farm owners who own the land that we work for are being stewards of the land and protecting the water and, you know, standing up for people who don't necessarily have a voice in the community. There's a lot of disconnect, the fact that there is a lot of like food that is not going to the local people in the community when there's so much food being grown. It's a huge disconnect, but on top of that, to enter in a huge like operation where none of the food is gonna be going to the community, how is that helping any of the community members? And the people who aren't getting food on their table and who are going to Quick Trip for their dinners and I don't know, I just wanted to speak on behalf of that and also the waterways and just please stand for protecting the less clean water that we have in this country. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Good evening. My name is Beth Wood. I am the environmental advocate for the Star Prairie Land Preservation Trust, and I'm a homeowner with my husband Warren on Cedar Lake, two-thirds of which is in Polk County and one-third is in St. Croix County. The mission of the Star Prairie Land Preservation
Excuse me, where are you from? What town are you from?
I live on Cedar Lake.
Oh, I understand that, but we need to know, do you live in what township?
I live in Star Prairie Township.
Star Prairie, all right, thank you.
But as I say again and again, the lake doesn't care about the county line when it's going through the lake, so St. Croix and Polk County share the, the water quality of Cedar Lake.
Yeah, no, that's fine. We just need to know where people are from. It's not a lake issue. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I wasn't more clear on that.
Yeah, that's okay.
The land trust currently protects over three hundred acres of land, critical to the health of the rivers and watersheds in Polk County. Specific to this issue on Cedar Lake, the Star Prairie Land Preservation Trust owns a sixty-three acre McMurtry Preserve, and it has fourteen hundred feet of lakeshore and one point three acre Stuart Nelson Cedar Bay Landing on the south end of the lake, which is a public access for kayaking, bird watching, and ice fishing. The land trust owns a forty-acre parcel called the Star Prairie Watershed Preserve, which is adjacent to the U.S. Fish and Wild Fall Land, and the Star Prairie Land Preservation Trust holds conservation easements along the Apple River in Polk County. A priority of the land trust is to protect our watershed. The Star Prairie Land Preservation Trust stands firmly opposed to our local representatives giving up our local control. We request the board put into place protections and regulations that will protect the rural character of Polk County, and we encourage the Polk County Board and the Environmental Land Development Team to strengthen any and all ordinances that are put into place to protect our waters. And the concession, concession here tonight, the consensus here tonight, I'm sorry, is the Bayfield ordinance will do that. Thank you for your time. As you can see, I mean, the room is filled with people. We love where we live, and we want to keep it clean and safe for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Evelyn Kaiser. I am the owner of Foxtail Farm in East Farmington. Really, I wanna kinda just echo a lot of what other folks in this room have said about the Bayfield ordinance. We do need to keep our local control. The second we give that away, we give away all our power to make future decisions, for you to make future decisions, for the folks in this room to help with that, so I strongly urge you to please take a look at that and, and go ahead and adopt it. But what I'm really here today with my time, as far as public comment, is to read postcards of voices that couldn't be here tonight that are also opposed to a KFO being brought into our county to destroy our beautiful, just beautiful area we live in. I mean, I'm sure most of you have traveled the U.S. and we keep coming back here cuz it's just that pretty. So I'll start off and just cut me off when I'm done with my three minutes. Please say no to factory farming. Nature is Polk County's most valuable and treasured resource. If not for you, if not for yourself, do it for our children and our future. Our four biggest lakes in Polk County provide a huge portion of our county's budget. If those lakes lose value because of a manure spill, we'll have a lot less revenue to provide the services. Why risk that? Dear supervisors, please do all you can to protect the water in Polk County. We residents are counting on you to keep this place livable, ensure our property values, and keep tourists coming. This one is from an eleven-year-old who lives here in Polk County. My name is Abel Whiteside. I am eleven years old, and I love swimming in clean water. If a KFO gets put in, I will have to stop swimming in Polk County's great lakes and rivers. I hope you change your minds. This one simply says, our children's children deserve a healthy planet. Another child from Polk County, hi, I am twelve years old, and I am very close to lakes, rivers, plants, and trees. I like Polk County. Please let me keep on loving it. Why do you like Polk County? Why do you like Polk County? Please don't risk our beautiful clean lakes and rivers for an Iowa company. It's not worth the risk. Wake up, we are in a drought. Please treat water as the precious resource that it is. No KFOs in our water. I do not think KFOs are in line with the values of Polk County, Wisconsin. I am a something, oh, a Wisconsin farmer and eleven thousand
That's three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, finish, finish your card if you want.
Oh, no, I actually can't read the handwriting, so
My name is Shelley Giswell. I live in Lake Town Township, and I've been here before, and many, 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 many hours have been spent on trying to communicate with community about what is possibly going to happen here if our townships and our county boards don't step up to protect us from factory farms, which aren't farms. In my opinion, they should be rezoned industrial because I don't feel that they're agricultural at all, except for the byproducts that go out onto agricultural land. Back in oh, in the eighties, some neighbors of mine and us got together, and we're the first people to start a conservation easement through West Wisconsin Land Trust. We did that so that we could preserve a beautiful wild lake, Alabama Lake, at the risk of us or for us not to be able to make a profit. We could have sold lake lots. We could have made a lot of money, but we were stewards of the land. We had a very, very passionate mission was to preserve the largest lake closest to the Twin Cities for everyone to enjoy. Now, to put all that work in and to get that done wasn't easy. We had developers on our back trying to buy it. We were passionate, got the job done, protected many, many, many acres with neighbors. And it's supposed to be in perpetuity, perpetuity forever, but that won't happen if KFOs move in and the trickle-down effect into all of our waters destroy that. I have a handful of cards also from people from our community who believe that the boards will not allow this to happen to them. They are sure that you're gonna take care of it. I've talked to lots and lots and lots of people over the last two years, and they don't come to these things because they don't think it's necessary cuz they trust you, that you're gonna protect their land values, their property values, the water that they drink, the air that they breathe. They just can't imagine you would do this. So I could read a whole bunch of these, same as the last woman. People are scared and they're trusting you, so please pass the Bayfield ordinance. And please take the responsibility that you do have the power. You do have the power to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christie Allen. I'm from town of Anderson in Burnett County. And I'm also the president of the Polk Burnett Wisconsin Farmers Union Chapter. I'm a beekeeper that keeps about a hundred and fifty hives in Polk and Burnett Counties at local farms. I'm here today, I'm one of the people here with part of ninety-three postcards that were filled out at last month's meeting. I just, I'll just read a few of them, but I, but I do wanna address a couple of issues. And I wanna thank you for the resolution to fund the DNR. That's a really good first step, but as everyone is trying to communicate to you, we really need every level of protection we can get, and your power to keep us safe is, is doable and would be really appreciated as, you know, property tax owners and people who live here and farm here, who don't wanna see our livelihoods destroyed by a giant corporation that's foreign-owned at the end. So I really encourage you to look at the, the Bayfield ordinance, Ashland County, Douglas County, and Bayfield, all three counties passed it six years ago with no lawsuits. And so to say that you don't have the power, I just don't think that's correct. Otherwise, those other three counties would lose that power. So just a few of these postcards that I thought were really impactful. Dear supervisors, I love my son. While living in Amory, he got the H1N1 virus. I almost didn't make it, he told me. The virus originated in a hog farm in Mexico. He recently moved to the countryside near Frederick. He works three jobs to support his dreams. KFOs are a threat to my son and his dream of country living, as well as myself and family. Please do not allow twenty-six thousand pigs from Iowa to be a source of harm to Polk Burnett Counties. Please vote to protect our air, land, and water. Hello, Polk County Board, thanks for all your work. I wanted to remind you that our water affects all those downstream for us, the Mississippi, all the way to the Gulf of Mexico and the ocean. Please support policies that are good for everyone here in downstream. And I just, I actually wanna say something about this particular postcard. We have a responsibility to protect our land and water and air, not only for the local community, but for those who are downstream. We are in a drought and climate change is real, and what happens if the Central Valley of California lights on fire and there's no local food because all the food that we have produced here goes somewhere else? That would be a pretty horrific problem of famine, and I know that sounds dramatic, but these are realities that And I know that sounds dramatic, but these are realities that young people think about every single day. Polk County Board, I live on the St. Croix River and Wood River. Please stop the hog factory farm, protect our water.
Thank you, that's three minutes.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
How much longer do we have, Lisa?
Hello. My name is Kathleen Moline. I live in the town of St. Croix. I live on a century farm. And as such, I'm a steward, although I do care very much about the economic development of our area, too. I have one card. This is a card from Ken Meter. Ken Meter just made a presentation to us talking about the economic downturns in our county over the past years, about the volatility of high-numbered facility animals. And it's very convincing that what we need, in fact, is a sustainable economy rather than a volatile one, which a 26,000 hog farm would bring to our area. I'm very much in favor of protecting the wonderful work of our local farmers, our local waterways, our land. We are responsible not only to ourselves, but to future generations. So thank you for your consideration. Again, I'm an advocate for maintaining local control and also for enriching our state to do things, not just as a rubber stamp, but as a very careful and thoughtful way to move forward for future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? We have time for one more.
All right, good evening. My name's Melanie Reebard. I live in the town of Alden. Oh, real quick, I wanted to acknowledge to the OJPO land that, that this government building sits on right now. I'm in here in support of the, as everyone else, I was out at the rally, actually. I'm opposed to CAFOs and supporting the Bayfield, that you mirror the Bayfield County resolution. I live on a lake. I am a certified master naturalist. I monitor three species. I monitor water. I'm really wedded to the land and I'm just real concerned about what CAFOs would bring to our county. I, real quickly, did some, just for fun, Google searching through the DNR website today and the water. And I learned a little about water. I'm sure you know this as supervisors, but I think it's worth repeating. St. Croix River Drainage Basin, which, you know, drains into the Mississippi. There's 24 basins in Wisconsin. We have one of them here and has 22 water sheds in it. Three of, the WDNR describes the St. Croix Basin as a special area of the state. This is, these are their words. Agricultural changes from small dairy farm to CAFOs create concerns over barnyard runoff, stream bank erosion, and manure management. This is from the website. And I looked at three watersheds. I'm in one of those. The upper Apple River watershed within our basin is for the DNR at high risk for non-point source pollution. Another one is Balls and Branch. I think that's right here, actually. We're part of that. It's also at high risk for non-point source pollution. Today, I looked also at trade risks, trade river watershed, and they're at medium risk for non-point source pollution. So I mean, like, there's many others, as you know, we have so much water here and, but I think in Polk County, but I think that was very repeated, it bears repeating and should should be in your mind and should go forward with this resolution once again to support the mirroring of the Bayfield County ordinance. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll end our public comment. Again, I encourage public comments over. I'd like to again say everyone would like to stick around. I think you guys will learn something here tonight. So I appreciate if you guys can stick around. A public comment is over. County Board Chair Report. One thing I've asked Bob to help me with this, sort of that. There's a map upon the, upon the board. And it's about the unzoned townships. Bob, can you just explain to everyone? And what you also have on your desk, I, I asked staff to just give us a a resolution on what the unzoned townships have to do. It's as simple as this. So a lot of the concerns that we hear on public comment, and the reason I'm bringing this up in my chair's report is, I probably handle more misinformation. This job is all about vetting misinformation. And I can clearly tell you that's what it is. Because as soon as you talk to someone, they're like, oh, that's not how it was told to me. Same tonight, we hear Bayfield, 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 like we never dealt with it. We dealt with the Bayfield thing for a year. We vetted the Bayfield thing. They talk, people don't understand it's the unzoned townships are the most at risk for a KFO. And so I asked Bob to just explain to us as a board what the process is for the five unzoned townships and who they are, and how easy it is to get under county zoning where we would have a, you know, we could have a CUP then process. Those can maybe be CUP, and they can have the county under their CUP. Gives them a couple layers of protection. So I'll let Rob briefly just explain that for me.
Well, yeah, I'll just keep it really simple. I will tell you that general zoning is not required in the state of Wisconsin. In other words, it's optional. Can you speak up a little bit, Bob? Oh, sure. The use of general zoning in Wisconsin is optional, like other states. In fact, out of our 72 counties, only 57 counties administer general zoning ordinances. And I just saw a quick survey of all the towns in Wisconsin. I'll answer your question and just say.
That's quick. You're doing good.
747 Wisconsin towns participate in county zoning authority. In other words, 747 towns in the state of Wisconsin fall under county zoning authority. 244 towns statewide administer their own town zoning ordinances. And we have three of them here. I'll just refer to this map. The town of St. Croix Falls, Farmington, and Garfield. These three towns somewhere in the past adopted village powers and got county approval to administer their own zoning ordinances. Also, back to statewide, 269 towns in the state of Wisconsin are on zone. And here in Polk County, we have five, which is Paul. Yeah. General County zoning authority is optional. So how does a town fall under? They want the, the security, the protection, and the regulation of county zoning? Well, they can go about it two ways. They can adopt county zoning authorities simply through an enabling resolution. It doesn't happen often. It's an easy marriage to join. It's a little harder to get out, as some of you may, may know that. And so that's what the handout is. Again, simple resolution, following the procedure of adopting ordinance, whereas, you know, the governing body receives a proposal, there's a public hearing, there's a notice, there's a notice, then a public hearing, then a decision by the governing board. And then that's public, that's publicized, they're publicated, and then you get full county approval. So that's one way. The other way, town can adopt their own general zoning ordinances. And again, like some of our towns in the past have done, St. Croix Falls, Garfield, and Farmington, adopted village powers and got county approval. So that, that is the process in a nutshell.
Thank you, Bob. It was much easier to have Bob say that than me. Thanks. The other thing I wanted to hand out a reminder on is that supervisors for their pay requests, they have to be on time. According to our rules of order, they have to be within 60 days. We've had a number of them over the last few months that have gone past 60 days. It's up to the county board chair to sign off on those. I've signed off on every pay request, but it's not part of the process. So just trying to remind everyone, 60 days is the cutoff and we're trying to hold to that. And I think that some of this other stuff will hit, one of the reasons I'm, I'll step down during the, I will step down during the resolution on the funding request for the state and John will take in, because I, I think a lot of the things, that's why I'm hoping the public will listen, I'm hoping the papers will kind of give both sides of the story than just covering the big event outside every month. And I, and it's time that we have an opportunity again to kind of tell the public because of all the misinformation I've heard this month. I do appreciate a lot of the comments now that are coming. I think those are good. But we'll have an opportunity to probably have a big discussion on this resolution coming. That's all I Administrator's report.
Okay, thank you. As you know, the census has been delayed a little bit, but we did get some preliminary numbers. I'll just give you some big picture ideas to chew on, and then as we get the details, we'll roll those out to you. Polk County's population from 10 years ago increased 1.7%. That's 772 people. That's not a great amount, and just as comparison, Barron was 1.8%, Burnett 6.9%, and St. Croix 10.9%. But we did have some growth, and I can remember in my EDC days, projections were that Polk County was actually going to lose population in this decade. So I think the last few years, we've seen a rebound and are starting to get a little more growth at a conservative pace. The other thing that I noticed is that the shift in age tends to be towards seniors, as we might all suspect, meaning that our percentage of youth in the county is a little bit less. That's something to keep in mind as we think about how we lead the county forward. And then finally, housing units. There are over 24,000 housing units. 79% are occupied, meaning 21% are unoccupied. We've all heard about the shortage of housing. And so I looked a little closer at this, and it's interesting. If you look at the, the villages and the cities, they don't have a lot of unoccupied homes or apartments. Most of the vacant ones are kind of out in the countryside, I think, just from looking at it. Now, that's it for the census. I will say, though, I'm keeping an eye on the local economy. I think you've all noticed, too. Many businesses are doing pretty well still. The indicator for us is sales tax through July. Sales tax is up 17% over the same time last year. That's, that's an extra $367,000 added to our revenue. So that's a good thing. Our economy is, businesses are doing well right now. We have begun a market study for the sports and rec complex idea. The company Sports Facilities Advisors is beginning to do their market research. They are providing information that, that will find out, I think, be helpful in many ways in terms of sports participation, activities of interest to all ages in the county, what types of venues or resources might be of interest to our people, as well as the folks who come into the county. So in the next eight weeks or so, they'll be doing that type of research. The goal of this, and this is the quick and easy way to give us the first look, is do we want to do this or move forward? It will tell us what sports, what activities, what events would be of interest or in demand, and if it's a good idea or not. So that's, that's the whole purpose of this. This time of year, the budget is being prepared. I'll just give you a kind of a timeline. In September, General Government Committee and the County Board will be seeing the draft budget, and then the, the budget we rolled out to everybody in committees, and at the next board meeting from which everyone can make their amendments as they, they plead. Finally, I don't want to steal Tanya's thunder on COVID, but I just want to emphasize that we're monitoring the recent events and the increase in COVID cases in the county. We will continue to look at that daily. We believe and we are convinced and we are encouraging everybody that vaccines are the best choice we can make because it can not only prevent the spread of COVID in most cases, but those who are getting COVID as a result, after being vaccinated, are showing fewer symptoms. And I'll let Tanya talk about some of the more appealing and aggressive activities we're doing to encourage people to consider getting a vaccine. That's all I have.
Questions for the Administrator's report? Yeah.
Market study, would you want to give us just a little more about who's doing it?
Yes.
What, how much we're spending, maybe?
Sports Facilities Advisors is probably the largest sports facility analysis company in the country. They've done hundreds of these in the last few years. They have offices, I think, in Atlanta, Tampa. They do a lot of work in the Midwest and in Wisconsin and Minnesota. The cost is $22,500. We chose three companies. We took bids from them. The unique thing about this company is they not only do the market analysis, but they also have been involved in managing. Not that they market themselves as that, but they have an understanding of how to manage such a complex, and they can say, I think, more readily, it'll work in this marketplace or it won't. Or if it is going to work, we recommend doing it this way. So if we move forward with this, they will continue to be able to provide us business plans and recommendations.
Hey, Fran, do you have a question?
Okay, Amy, you have a question?
Is it now a sports, it's not a sports ag anymore?
Yeah. You know, it, it's, it's, we don't, it's a big thing right now. It's, it's a broad concept, is all it is. What this study will do is help identify what the demand is for what types of sports and activity. The reason I took ag out of it, quite simply, is because people were trying to convey a message that just wasn't true. They were trying to say this, the goal of this was to make the fair move, and that's not the case. So it could still include agricultural activities, like an equestrian center or something like that. But we just said, let's make it simple. We're not trying to do anything that would harm another entity in this county. We're simply trying to say, is this something that will help the county move forward?
Thanks, Vince. Hey, number 11, right? Confirmation appointments. I, I've made a appointment. I just need to get, I believe I got.
I think you put $100 in the tip jar for that.
I probably should. As long as you don't get it. Sure. Yeah, Doug.
Would, would you lower your mask when you're speaking? It's awful hard to hear.
Sure.
Thank you.
Very different.
Gotcha. All right. So on this appointment, do I, do I do a motion in a second? So we discuss, or I guess my, this, huh? Okay, so we want to, do you make a motion on the county chairs for Doug? Do I get a second? Got a second? All right, discussion. I, I, I took over that position from a North Tech. I took over from yeah, Jepson, Larry. I took over, been on it for a couple of years. You go to it four times a year, whole time I've been on it. Doug has been there. You know, clearly Doug is very understanding of the whole process through the state. They, they hold the meetings in Spooner sometimes, and now they're holding the meetings at Hayward. Very difficult for myself and order to ask any supervisor to make that trip to Hayward, sit for four hours and listen to talking about these trails. And Doug said, hey, I'll do it for you and be that the county's representative. So there's a resume in here on him.
a resume in here on him and that's my, that's my choice to have him replace me as the representative for the county. Doug has agreed to give reports back to Environmental Services on what we're doing at Nortec. So that's why I did that. Any questions? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All saying aye? Got it Doug. I'm done. Yep. Pointments by the county administrator. Do we have a motion for Jim Anderson, the appointment? First, we got a second. Second, discussion on that administrator?
Mr. Anderson has been on the board of four previously and he's active. He's performed in an admirable way and he would like to do it again and we all agreed with that. So we'd just like him to continue on the Board of Adjustments.
Any questions about Jim? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Carry. Substance abuse scorecard is at Chad.
On your desk, you have the July scorecard. I promised you guys it's in that I would start doing comparative graphs. I apologize. I had something that threw me away for a couple of weeks and I didn't have time to design new graphs, but I will have them for you next month. Just a couple of takeaways. Methamphetamine and alcohol are still our predominant substances that people are being arrested for. Forty to 50% of our jail population continues to be substance abuse related people. We have about half and half residents versus non-residents being arrested for substance abuse related crimes. Most of the offenders are over the age of 30. That's been a trend that's been happening. And the other thing that I like to see is our treatment court participants post surge of COVID, we were down as low as four or five, we're back up to 10. That's risen every month fairly steadily. So we're seeing some growth in treatment court participation. But in September, I will start producing some trend analysis for you. I just didn't have time the last couple of days.
Amy?
Does that mean the stage two and stage C3 that we see that's kind of down is sort of a COVID impact?
It's possible. They don't necessarily progress through the treatment court program on a set schedule. It's more on their performance and some people really struggle getting out of stage one. Some people will get into an advanced stage two or three and they'll regress to a previous stage. What we do want to see in that Supervisor Middleton, the goal is to have a steady flow through treatment court so that we start to see some equalization in those numbers at each. Ideally, it's an 18-month program, but some people struggle with, with various stages of it and it takes longer.
Yeah, I got, I got a question. We want to be able to kind of track, okay, here's how many arrests in a month for methas. This is how many have been charged and this is how many have actually been sentenced. Are we going to see that?
I'm working on that piece. That is, that is the longer, so I got the snapshot piece of it. That's the longer thing because somebody may enter the system in January.
Right.
And not move through the system till, well, there's one off the top of my head, entered the system three years ago and still hasn't moved through the system.
I understand that.
So we will at some point, I'm just still putting that data and figuring out how to track that. That's the question we hear from the public constantly is, it's the same people reoffending and they're being let out of jail or they're not even being prosecuted or they plea some deal. And we want, I think the public wants to see, we hear the cops arrest these guys, the bad guys, the district attorney decides whether he's going to charge him or not. So there's where we lose some of it. And then when it goes to the judge, what does the judge do?
Right.
And I think, you know, I think that's what the public wants to hear. And we're working on that. We're growing in the data area. The one graph I do put in there each month is repeat offenders versus new offenders.
Sure.
To kind of track that. But I know, yeah, it would be nice to see how they progress and it will also benefit the CJCC program.
Okay, so it's coming.
It is coming. We're working.
May I say something?
Yes, Sheriff.
Well, it's a little misleading to me, I think, on the repeat offender because if they're from out of state and we arrest them, I don't always know if they've offended where they're from. It's just that if I don't have them in my system more than once, I don't consider them a repeat. So if the tourist is over here and gets caught with meth, they're listed as a non-repeat offender. However, they might have something in another state.
So would you care to, is there anything else with this that, you know, I said what I think I hear the public ask and I don't know if I said it exactly right. Is there anything else to add to that? How do, how do we tell the public that the bad guys are getting arrested, but everyone says they're getting out or they're not being prosecuted? Are we missing something? Is it just a, just a cop issue, a district attorney issue, a judge issue? Is there another piece in there that we're missing?
Well, I think that's where I think, once we get more established with the CJCC, they could be a benefit because that is all stakeholders and it talks about the whole system. Right now, we're basically providing our data on the people we arrest. But it is a system that is involved in the whole process.
And we take the sheriff's office data, the CJCC data and the DA's data, we're still trying to figure out how to capture the court. We've got three of the four pieces. Four pieces.
Is it political or is it just work?
No, it's just, as the sheriff said, even state systems don't copy other state systems. It's figuring out how to find the right data and make it all fit.
Everyone's buying into doing that, right? It's just work, right? Okay. John?
Just in a comment to, and that's the problem that the chairs have. And the last resolution I presented at Wisconsin County was from Polk County, July 28th urging the governor to present a fund to have a database, up-to-date database for drug offenders. And of the 10 I presented, that's the only one that didn't pass. It wasn't defeated. It was referred back to the Board of Directors because some of the comments from some counties thought, well, it may be interfered with some, some personal files. This is all cleared by that, but it was referred back to the Board of Directors. But we sure got a staff, I think our staff from Polk County for presenting that. All in all, we had, I presented 10 of them. They were fantastic.
Any other questions for Chad?
So tonight, we have a little special twist on our COVID updates. We have a live vaccination happening. One of our county board supervisors who has not been able to get vaccinated has agreed to get vaccinated at county board. So we'll go ahead and do that real quick. We brought Michelle, our nurse, one of our nursing staff in to do the vaccine. We've already done the education and consent form. So we will go ahead and get that vaccine done.
I got a special request. Can I give them their vaccine?
Yes, actually, do you want to turn that responsibility over to Sheriff Nelson? We do have four extra vaccine and this is the.
Oh, perfect. That's the one I wanted.
So no, no, all joking aside, we want to get Mr. Wilson vaccinated. We do have four extra vaccines. If anybody's interested, I think we take a break after we're done with this. So any takers, we don't want to waste vaccine. So four doses of J&amp;J available if you would like. Michelle has agreed to stay on for a bit longer if anybody wants that vaccine. So we'll go ahead and get Supervisor Wilson vaccinated.
Get the tissues out. He's sweating.
And oh.
We all have to monitor him for 15 minutes, okay, you guys? And Michelle said she would stay on for that part too, just in case we need a nurse.
This is going to look really bad if I'm dead in 20.
You could come up closer if you want to. Get a close up of this.
I want to see. We made a piece of this paper. Is there a vaccine now? Is booster shot or first one?
This is the one and done, Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Getting him in the arm, right Supervisor Wilson? Getting him in the arm, right?
We have unofficial data on that and I believe that the state is releasing more information on that towards the end of this week. So we will bring that to, he's asking about data on breakthrough cases. We, like I said, we have unofficial, we've been tallying it here, but we don't, we don't. There are, yeah, there are breakthrough cases. I'd say it's a mix. I can't give you an exact percentage.
Tanya, do you have any information on a booster yet?
Yes, we do. So, so state is working on their guidance for us. Once we have more solid guidance from the state, we will meet as a team to figure out what that looks like for the health department along with the other vaccinators in the county.
How was that?
He took classy to the castle like.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson. We actually, we actually made a deal and we got two vaccine hesitant people vaccinated out of this. My husband was the other one. He had, he was a holdout. So we made some deals with the devil and got two people.
So you gave him a hundred dollar bill.
All right, so.
Only if I die, she'll give me a hundred dollars.
That was the deal. Okay, so positive COVID cases, we've seen a little jump up here. So far in August, we've had 130 and we do believe that that is mostly Delta variant. So we're really keeping an eye on that Delta variant. Super contagious, twice as, they think twice as contagious as the previous variants.
They have a test that actually tells you it's Delta?
They do sampling of, of the test and, and right now in Wisconsin, it's more than 90% are considered Delta variant. So the assumption is that most of the cases are Delta variant. So, so with that, we're keeping an eye on it. We're, we're continuing with our vaccine marketing and trying to get vaccine hesitant people to sign up to do those vaccines. You've seen our mobile clinics out and about. We've done so far 1,022, 1,023.
In July?
Total vaccines since we shut down the drive-through and started using the command post to go out in the community to do those vaccines along with. I can't remember the exact date. I think it was in June. It was a lot slower than our drive-through clinic. We've done 175 here at our walk-in clinics. On Tuesdays, we plan to increase our vaccination days and have a walk-in five days a week here. Also offering testing, currently testing two days a week, but we plan to do testing five days a week in the parking lot. You see the cones down there, that's where we're doing that. So that will start soon with schools starting. We're getting a lot more requests and people wanting test, testing. So always looking at the best way to do that. We've done 364 tests here since May 3rd. 39 of those have been positive. And we did 69 tests on the 16th of this month. We had a outbreak at a school. So we had them all come down here to get tested and I think we had 100% compliance with the students getting tested. So that was good too. And then I just wanted to just, we hear a lot of myths about COVID vaccine. So I pulled this off of the CDC. I know there's, there's different Polk County myths, but these are straight from the CDC. So the first one, we do, yes, we do. So the first one is that the vaccine can cause you to be magnetic. You've heard about people putting the magnet up to their arm and it sticks. That's not true. Is it authorized? Do any of them, are any of them authorized for use in the, in the United States? Shed or release any other of their components? So that's, if you get it, is there live viral inside of you? There is no live virus inside of you. So you can't shed it and pass it on to other people. So you hear about people who have, are getting chemotherapy and, and the doctor says, well, I can't have it because I might pass it to others or others might pass it to me. That's not true. These are all frozen. They come frozen solid. So nothing is live in those. Can it alter my DNA? No, it does not change or interact with your DNA in any way. Both mRNA, which is the Moderna and Pfizer, and the viral vector, which is Johnson &amp; Johnson, deliver instructions to test our cells to start building protection. So it doesn't alter your DNA at all. Skimming through, does it, will I, will I test positive for COVID-19 on a viral test? So this is a big one. You won't test positive. It doesn't make you test positive on a COVID test, but you might test positive with an antibody test because that means that your body has built up those antibodies. So we get that question a lot. Can the CDC mandate that I get a COVID-19 vaccine? The answer is no. Can it make me sick with COVID-19? The answer on that is no, but you might have some side effects and that means that it's working and building up that immunity in your body. And I think that's about it. We can do the Polk County version next time if you really want to. There's all kinds of interesting things we've heard. You know, does it, it might make me go in the dark. And if the answer is no, but if it does, we want you to call us. We just want to see that. But anyway, just to, not to make light of it, we are watching it. A little bit concerned about Delta variant. So, you know, we are encouraging masking, no mandates at this point, but, or mandates in the state, but it's just something that's a good thing to do.
I just was wondering if you were able to comment about pregnancy and miscarriage and the vaccine causing, not causing pregnancy, but the vaccine causing miscarriage in women? Because I've actually known people who believe that.
I just, that was on there. I skimmed over. Is it safe to go COVID-19 if I would like to have a baby one day? Yes, if you're trying to become pregnant now or want to get pregnant in the future, you may get the COVID vaccine if it's available to you. There's currently no evidence that it causes any problems with pregnancy, including the development of the placenta. In addition, there's no evidence that female or male fertility problems are a side of it. We have pregnant women come through our vaccine line.
According to the papers and news and that, they did that study on that and there was a lady that was pregnant that got the vaccine. She had the baby and the baby had the vaccine already.
They say that it helps protect the baby.
What are we seeing for the elementary school, you know, the kids that can't get vaccinated? What are we seeing for masking protocols? Do we know anything yet?
We're working through that with the schools right now. There's lots of guidance out. Nothing's solid yet. It's recommended.
Is each school district doing its own thing then?
Yes, a little different variation of their back to school safety plans.
Do you drop in the age?
Age for vaccine? Not yet. 12, 12 is the age right now.
Give me the definition of molecular test.
A molecular test? So molecular test is, I believe, I believe it is the PCR test, the gold standard. So that's the, the real thing, not a rapid test.
What do you do?
We do, we do the molecular. We send them off to the lab. It's official when we get it. Rapid tests, you can get a negative, false negative. We would want you to be retested then to get the.
The turnaround time.
The ones that we do here, it's about a two-day turnaround. It depends on the busyness of the lab. Hospitals can sometimes turn them around quicker, but I know that they are now taking appointments for those.
We have hospitalized in Polk County? In or out of the county?
On the website. We do, don't take that data.
Just, just a comment is, Fran, they are bringing, if the ICU beds are pretty scarce in the southern states, they're bringing COVID patients from Mississippi, northern, southern states, up to Evanrick Western, those in the cities because they have no.
Thanks Tanya. Brad?
Brad's got a question. Doctor?
I'm sweating and I feel faint.
Is it air conditioning?
So what do you see as the biggest issue that people like me don't get the shot? I cut a deal, but I respect COVID, I don't fear it. I've done this for the fun of it as much as anything. And here's what I hear is that I don't want to get the shot. You know, I don't want the government to tell me to get a shot. I told Tanya, send me a card, I'll cut it up and throw it in the fire. If I have to have a card to walk into your business, I'm not coming. Seems I have to have a card to get in a business, you have then, to me, and you think I'm out there, but we're, we're pushing on the edge of a communist country at that point, if, if you're going to reject me for not having a card. And then people under 50 tell me I have a better chance of dying. Perhaps not catching COVID, but as far as the mortality rate of someone who's under 50 years old, healthy, it is virtually not. You know, so I don't have a problem either way. I've been vaccinated since it came out.
Sorry about that. Do you want me to answer him first? I don't know, vaccine hesitancy, there seems to be that age, 18 to 59 age group who just don't want to get it, and probably for the reasons that you're saying. And what we, our position here at the Health Department is that it's always your choice. We don't, we're not forcing it on anybody, but we want you to consider everything and if, if you need to educate yourself, we're always here to educate. And thinking about your choice, but think about potentially spreading it to somebody else who might have a more serious consequence or, or, or become really sick. I know that, I've talked to a lot of people who have been really sick with COVID and, you know, they, they would choose to get the vaccine, so they don't have to go through that again. We're seeing this different variant now, just like the flu vaccine, it only covers so many variants, so if, if they don't want to go through that again, I think they're more likely to get it. Or until somebody has a negative consequence, they're hospitalized or they die, until you know it's affected somebody, you might look at it differently.
I did, because I know somebody who died.
You did? You do know?
Do you like your videos or send a shot?
Give him 50, give him his 50 bucks now.
Doug? Or not Doug, Joe. Sorry Doug.
One thing that, I've seen, I've talked with people, some of the guys at the bar and stuff, that the commercial that they make, they show that goddamn needle this long, and that deters a lot of people. They said, "That thing ain't going in my arm, it'll come out the other side."
Did you feel it?
Did I feel what? Did I feel my needle up more than I am? I went right through outside.
And we have really good nurses and vaccinators giving those shots and we've had a lot of, they'll say, "I didn't even know you gave it to me." And it depends on the needle you use and the skill behind the.
That needle there would hurt.
Yes. May need a tetanus apple, actually you get this one.
All right, thank you guys, thank you Tanya. Or is there more?
Rehospitalization.
Re?
Anything else?
Thank you Tanya.
Yeah, so watch for continued marketing and making it easy for people to get vaccinated, that's what we're.
Hey, would you tell the group too and the public that they can call, if you have a small group of business, maybe the paper can put that in their article when they talk about COVID.
Yep.
So I think that's important for the public to hear this.
Yeah, because we're everywhere and it, maybe it's almost like a needle in a haystack or moving target sometimes to find us, so if you have, if a business or another organization or group has a group of people who want to get vaccinated, give us a holler, we will pack up our car and our vaccine and come right onsite and do a strike team and vaccinate people.
You've been to a half a dozen farms already, haven't you?
Yeah, we've done the migrant farms, we've had a pretty good response from the farmers, the larger farmers in the area who do have migrant workers, so we'll go out and vaccinate those individuals too.
I've had some calls about extended hours till eight o'clock at night.
For us to do those?
Yeah.
Yep, we set up Friday night out at the Browntine. We're, when we go five days a week here, we'll have some evening hours along with evening hours for testing to make it easier for people who are working all day.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Are you guys taking a break? We would just offer that up.
Okay, does any, do you guys want to take a break? All right, we'll take a, huh?
John did.
John wants to take a break? Hey, we'll take a 10-minute break, 7:30 we'll start back up. Need a motion to go into committee in the hall?
I'm in caution.
Second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Hey, 14 was struck, 15. A report and information regarding 2021 local redistricting process.
We'll just start with a real quick overview. It's time for the redistricting process. This happens after every 10-year census. The process of redistricting begins in Wisconsin. Redistricting is the process of redrawing the lines of districts from which public officials are elected with the purpose of preserving the one-person, one-vote fairness principle. They use the traditional principles and concepts of being, districts being compact, contiguous, substantial equivalence of population. So this year, our Polk County staff will once, once again be working with the Wisconsin Legislature using the WISE LR program. It works with geographical data, boundary information, and the newly collected census data to draft possible options for new supervisory district. The Wisconsin Legislature outlines a three-step procedure and 180-day timeline, usually from April through September for local redistricting. Well, the three steps. First step is adoption of a tentative county supervisory district. There are requirements laid out by the legislature as far as what the board is, how many boards are supposed to do. So establish and reaffirm the number of supervisory districts. Hold a tentative county supervisory district plan, hold a public hearing on the proposed plan, and adopt a tentative plan. You have to get that tentative plan to each municipal governing body. So we need to finish that step one first before we go on to step two. We give them, we take the information of municipal boundaries, design the, and then they go along through municipalities. They have their portion of it, they give boards or adjust their lines in accordance with the tentative county supervisory redistricting plan. Municipal clerks are done with that, they forward the plans back to the county where we hold, they give corrections or modifications that need to be done, and then hold a public hearing to adopt the final surprise and file a cert by copy with the ordinance with the Secretary of State. It's a relatively straightforward process, however, this year we have encountered some obstacles due to unforeseen situations. We've had the delay in receiving the 2020 census results, so we weren't able to start the redistricting back in April. Those results just started to come through last Thursday or Friday, I believe, and that's just the county results. I don't believe that they've released the municipal results yet. Right now, the Legislative Technology Services Bureau is busy getting that information integrated with their WISE LR program so that in a week or so, we can start using the programs. That's kind of why we're moving on this now. Another thing that we probably tend to run into, state legislation was proposed but was not adopted to extend the redistricting deadline, continue that 180-day process. Not adopted, so now we're looking at condensed timeframes that need to be completed by November. And then the last, the slot was released last Thursday, that information. Going through the changes that have come this year, result of the, they are important timelines to complete the local redistricting process. 180-day process is now going to be done within just under 90 days. So WSA has been working hard with us to provide counties with guidance on the new process of redistricting timeline. They prioritized publication deadlines, notices of public hearings, public input on the process, and on the proposed map. So using that as a basis, I came up with a tentative timeline for us. I just applied our local newspapers' mission deadlines to give public notices notice and kind of worked backwards from there as far as what we would need to do. So. But, and if, you know, again, we would start tentatively, the transition of data from the census should be integrated into that WISE LR by Monday, we're hoping still, so we'd be able to move forward on Monday with creating some tentative plan. That gets done, you would have to have, post a public hearing notice for three weeks, and then hold a hearing on a tentative plan. We also need to have a selection process on picking one of those, one of the options to draft for the. About point, you can just see how it goes along. We need to give the municipalities enough time to do their part, need to have the other hearing, and then the, everything would be done and certified by the. The deadline here is November 20. Kind of what's driving, driving the deadline. As far as that goes, that's just kind of a really quick overview of the many changes that have happened in the last. So what I need from you today is a determination to establish or reaffirm the size of county board, if you want to keep that at 15 supervisors. Determination on, and a determination on who oversees the process of drawing district lines. The option would be to, the whole board can continue to do that, or we can appoint a redistricting committee that we could follow up with, help make decisions, just need a decision on that.
Need a decision tonight?
I kind of need some direction, yeah, tonight, since the results are coming Monday. So I don't know if we can do that in the committee in the hall or after.
Well, we can, after we come out of, you know, we can, is there consensus? Let's just, you want to deal with this right now then?
That's cool.
Yeah. So what's, does anyone have an opinion about that?
They've had a redistricting committee in 2011 and then a midterm redistricting committee as well in 2012, and that's when the four supervisors went from 13 to 15. So they did have that redistricting committee in the past.
And I will say, if, if the board chooses to go with a redistricting committee, we're going to have to draft a resolution on how it's constituted and comprised and what authority it has, and we'll have to have a couple of special meetings for the resolution, for the adoption of the resolution, so we can form the committee. So time constraints are, are pretty rough right now if the work to do.
So kind of maybe due to the, like Travis and the.
It would be more efficient timewise to go through the whole board? That being said, it is.
I think you're, according to 772 people, there are almost less than 1%, aren't we?
Just 1.7%.
Yeah, so I've been in this redistricting before and I think we, we're well within our guidelines of the number of people that we wanted for. There wasn't any big changes in any municipality, so I certainly think that 15 supervisors for, for that number of people had, there was no large in, in any particular municipality, so.
Well, I'm aware of with the estimated numbers, I haven't seen official numbers from the municipalities. Did you?
Things kind of stay the same? Is that what, or do they change a little bit?
Western far, western edge of the county. For the northern or western edge, western edge of the county is where some population would be lost. Most of the towns, villages, and city gained, even if it was just a very small amount, but where it was less was that very western edge. Where it gained the most, not surprisingly, is the southern part of the county. Alden, Osceola. Farmington, that area had the biggest gain. I think some of them had, for example, Osceola had 7.7% gain, which makes sense given they have the largest gain in necco construction. As well, but if I understand this correctly, they said we can be within 10%. So then, so then if you take the total population of Polk County and you divide it by the 15 supervisory districts, you want to have each supervisory district be within roughly 3,000 people. Or within 10% of 3,000 people, which 10% of 3,000 is what.
Well, it is a requirement, we're going to have to make some changes. Or yes or no?
Not necessarily, it's not necessarily.
Changes made, but we would still have to approve current thing going forward again. It's one of those to consider, like redraw all, the principle behind it is to erase all of the current lines and see what works for what the information we have now.
So, and if I understand correctly, they want this done as much as possible by census tract. The census tracts are different and municipal boundary line, but.
Want to keep that in consideration.
Yeah, you want to keep that into consideration, but in rural areas like this, that's pretty hard. It's pretty hard to make each, make it by specifically, exactly by census tract is difficult.
Supervisor Duncanson brings up a good point. Should we opt to keep the, to take the, the oversight committee that has the whole board? I would also need to move forward with one other thing, just so we know which types of plans to draft, to present to you. There's some criteria down here at the bottom, some options within that system where we can kind of focus and we just want to kind of get in the, in areas of.
All right, so let's just do the first one. We're going to let the county board do it. It sounds like that's not going to work to have a committee. Is everyone okay with that?
Correct. I want staying at 15.
I want staying at 15, everybody, yeah? Yeah, what's your next one? You want us to give you a direction on?
Well, if you can just get kind of an overview of what your priorities are when we present the map.
And actually Lisa, if you don't mind me interjecting, you guys may already know this because you've done this before, but what Lisa has there for established criteria, she like didn't make this up. This is, this is like what is, what is recommended by the census bureau. It's that, that's what.
So back in 2012, the priorities that they had collected were keep the goal of protecting the rural areas, splitting existing word lines, keeping districts contiguous and compact, and keeping the new districts substantially equal in population, making every effort to stay within that 10%. Those were the priorities that they had collected last time.
Go ahead, Brad, just throw it out there.
So somehow or another, I ended up on that 2012 redistricting, don't know what, from 23 to 15 supervisors. And realistically, when that committee met, we had two options. One was leave my district with four towns and the village of Frederick, and the other one was to take the village of Frederick out and include Johnstown and somebody else in it. Went for the landmass of the county, so I don't think we're going to end up with a whole bunch of choices. I think there's going to be. And then again, if memory serves me right, the village of Osceola was the one that was the farthest off because there again, there was no way to make it right.
We're up a little bit. But it was very close, and it was within that margin that they give you, so.
What else do you need, Lisa?
So what I'm hearing, it kind of sounds like we're going to be doing both.
Leave it alone.
Yep, leave it alone, keep the same thing.
That's what I hear.
Okay, all right.
Keep it the same.
We have to present multiple options.
Yeah. Easy as you can on you. Got to get rid of one supervisor. I'm sure we'll all agree on the one that has to go. All right, so we did that. Especially regarding the need and the development for the agricultural business advisory committee. Is that Vince?
Well, I can start it off, but I'd recommend Mr. Bonner Price kind of fill it in because it was his idea. But Mr. Bonner Price pointed out to me a while back that even though we talked about the lime core, we talked about CAFOs, we talked about other agricultural issues, that not many of us on this committee are still farming. And he wanted to create a committee of farm-related individuals who could advise the board whenever they dealt with an agricultural issue that might be controversial, to get their input. Since then, we've talked with the committees and talked with different supervisors, and the challenge is, how are you going to create this committee with representatives? Because farming is not just farming, you have different kinds of farms, different, you know, important issues. So the question is, is do we go with a set committee which might meet, might not meet semi-regular basis? Or do we have this board or a committee choose relevant farmers that deal with particular issues? So if they're affected by something that's going on, is it going to be our policy to say, because this is an ag issue, let's refer to people who are involved in that industry? So I just threw out kind of the overview of what this discussion is about, and John, you might want to present your case.
Well, what I, what I did was, I thought the title of it was, was ag business. And so I know most of the town chairman around, I know somebody from all the township and municipality. And so I, I reached out on some phone calls and some, some appointments and everything, and I think I covered the county pretty well. Everybody's got their ideas, but I think I, I listened and gave you a list of mix of ag, ag business people. Farm Bureau, there was Co-op people, and I, Dan Rockery is a, is a ag salesman in our county, and Dan, I had never talked to you about it, but I did some other people that know you and worked with you, and so I had you as kind of a chair of an ag business ad hoc committee. So I, after about three, four months, I gave a list of, I think about seven names that were suggested to me, and that's kind of where we sat, and anybody else can, can subjet, suggest.
Go ahead, Brad.
So I'm just thinking, who decides what's relevant and who isn't? Vince was saying, people, you want to select people relevant, how who decides who's relevant and who isn't? Then why aren't we giving an opportunity for people who have an interest to step up and maybe participate, or do we want a handpick committee by a couple of people? I mean, if we have a committee, I would, I would think that it would be inclusive to offer it up and see if there are people who are interested, and maybe nobody is interested. I don't know, maybe nobody is interested, but I would think that it would be good thing to put it out there.
Go ahead, Tracy.
So can I just ask, what is the goal to putting this committee together? I mean, what are you hoping to accomplish by putting this committee or this group together?
From the time the county board started, there was always an agriculture committee, and it was a five-person committee, just like all the committees we have today. And when former administrator with his new formula, central government, he chose five committees from the 15. And so the ag committee was just one of those that were eliminated on that. I started out in six on the ag committee. Committee of five county board people plus two advisory people. Jay, you're familiar with those, and some of those, farmer advisory, some was out of the book. And so in this new central government, the voice of agriculture, and we're still, agriculture's still the number one business in Polk County, and there's no representation. And it's really not fair, I think anybody can see that. And still a lot of people's minds out there, oh, how, how do you deal with ag business in Polk County? We don't, there's no, no influence whatsoever, no spokesman whatsoever. Just being fair to the number one industry in Polk County that they have an ag, ag act.
All right.
So one of the things that I was thinking about is like just the process that we go through to choose this committee. And I watched the PTAG process go through, and we had a, had a, did we have some questions that we asked people? We had a set of questions, people were, you know, it was broadly advertised in the community, and then people could put their application in, it went to Vince, and then Vince made sure that each of the different user groups were represented, and it was a kind of a fair process that has resulted in a group that works well together and I think represents, you know, in this situation, it's not different trails, but in this could be all the different ag components. So I just like that.
So it sounds like there's some consensus to have it, but you, it sounds like there's a process that you'd like to work through to make sure how the committee's established, and just can't pick names.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't necessarily thinking about whether I was bored or not, I just think that process worked for PTAG, applying it here.
Yeah.
Well, we're going to have an ag agent, I think, now, part-time. I think we should let him at least come and see if we do need a committee at all. I mean, let the ag agent get out there, get around, find out what the problems are, and then start deciding if we need another committee for this year.
Hey, Brad?
Mr. Colonel, Mr. O'Connell has way too high of an impression of the county ag agent. Oh, any farmer in Polk County for the most part, I'll tell you, who don't you need an ag agent?
That's okay, it's not your point right now, you don't have the floor.
They're a dinosaur, it isn't that I'm against them, it's just no farmer ever sees one. And granted, we haven't had one for a year now.
What does an ag agent do?
One left.
Can someone tell us?
I was going with extension when they brought us in.
Extension is bringing us an ag agent?
Yes.
Okay, anyone, can anyone tell us what an ag agent does? Anyone, I mean, there's only one farmer in here, can you tell us what an ag agent does, Brad?
In my mind?
Yeah.
Nothing.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
So the new, the new proposal of an ag agent would be someone who works with agronomists at a co-op. I call my agronomist, I don't call UW extension agent. I don't, I don't call UW extension agent if I have an animal problem, I call the vet. I call my nutritionist, I don't need.
Sure.
I don't want to say they're not used, but they're not used, you know, for.
It helps to hear from someone that is doing the work. Uh, John?
Again, takes your six or seven calls from people that were in the master gardener program, and the ag agent that we had was, was the leader in the master gardener program. We dissolved that, I remember the comments a year ago, Mr. Chair, well, you can get that, if not, they could get that online. These people really took a bit of that, and now the master gardener program has dissolved without, without a leader, and they just not working very well. And I think in just about every municipality, they were involved in Main Street.
I can, I can tell you, since we're the committee of the whole, that master gardener, I feel the same way about supervisor Olson did nothing for most of us. And there's a lot of landscapers in the community, because our community reached out to them, and they had zero value, you know, and that's where I go back to, is it the core business of the county to furnish a master gardener? That, that need was ridiculous, that we're out planting flowers on Main Street. That's just my opinion, what I heard, it was a total lie. So I just want to give the other side. Any other questions? Doug, or why do you keep calling me Doug? Sorry, Doug.
Joe.
That's ready to set, you got to put it back.
We have done with the Cedar Lake restoration and stuff, we give $1,000 to the farmers. They have to get the stuff there, run it for the area and that, and Lee Carlson puts on a thing every year, that extension, and I don't know if extension, but water and land and all them are all down there. They bring all the chairs, tables, and everything, and they have a big meal and all that, but they bring all the farmers in, and they're showing them, you know, the different things, you know, about the different additives to crops and all the stuff, and the, with the water and stuff. But I mean, there's probably 20 farmers that, their wives.
And, and that's done by UW extension?
No.
Oh, so you're saying they don't.
That's the farmers that.
Farmers that are on it, okay.
But UW would take.
The water, shit.
Yeah.
They had three people there this year, we had representation.
Three people there this year?
Carlson's.
John?
Instead of chopping up the position here and what they do, why don't we have the extension guy come, there is a new one appointed, them come and I think enlighten us on what his responsibilities are.
Do we actually have?
I think we'd all learn something.
It's a budget issue. Do we actually have it?
Oh, there's, no. So there's no one now, it's in, it's in the budget, and it won't affect the budget at all.
Oh, it's, it's going to happen.
Extensions budget will actually be down, I believe she said, a little bit from the environmental service side.
So you're saying, John, you're willing to just, let's wait till this ag agent's on board, and then let's get him involved in helping to form this?
It's another idea.
Okay.
We're looking for ideas.
Doug?
I'm just going to throw out that I talked to some smaller farmers, and they don't have all of this representation like Brad's talking about, and they really like, because they don't have a agronomist and all those people, they like the ag agent, because that's the only person they can talk to.
Sure. What's your definition of a small farmer?
Uh, 60 beef and, and not, not a milk farm, dairy farm, all that smaller.
They have access to the same resources that they.
Just saying what they tell me, I don't, I don't.
Those resources are available to anybody that would like it. And those resources are available through where?
Any of the chemical salespeople that call up.
Any of the co-op.
Any of the products that are, that any producer utilizes, those resources are available.
But I think that's what a lot of non-farmers need to hear, that you can go into any co-op, any place you buy your feed, your chemicals, your fertilizer, anywhere, and you say, I have a question. I had a question on my hay field a few years ago for my horses, and I walked in there, they sold me the right seed, the right lime, had a guy give me a test kit, I tested my soil, and it was all for free. So I would consider myself a very small farmer. All right, so it sounds like we got consensus, we're going to wait till the ag agent's on board, and then let's revisit this idea of a committee, right? Is that good? Okay. Update on Clam Falls Dam, Vince?
Yeah, you put up that slide, I'm going to put up a slide, if you recall. I don't know if you can read this, but let me just refresh your memories. If you recall, the board had a committee of the whole where they said, do we want to become owners of the Clam Falls Dam? Way back, I think the group said no, then they said, let's reconsider it if certain conditions can be met. The conditions are on the left on the slide there. Basically, let me tell you what those conditions are. Remember, can we get the state to fund the repair? Our senator and, and representative, assembly person got $2 million in the state budget this year for the repair of the Clam Falls Dam. Okay, so we got the, and so if you start on the left, that was the criteria. Let me go down those real quickly. Second, we wanted Clam Falls to have skin in the game. Are they going to contribute since it's their dam right there? Or were they, you know, just asking us to take owner? Third, we had to make sure we could get liability insurance, protect ourselves. And fourth, we wanted a contribution from Northwest Electric or their partner Renewable World Energies, because they had an escrow fund. We wanted that money and the cost of whatever it would take to tear down and to reclaim back to its original state. So the result that we got, we did get the $2 million in the state budget, however, something to consider, it's never black and white. The $2 million was based on the estimate from a couple of years ago where the cost was going to be about 1.3 million to fix. Inflation has really gone up in the construction business. The current estimate that we got just a month or two ago was, and it was just one estimate, is $1.93 million.
Who's the estimate from, Vince?
That is from the construction company called Kaiser, and they are the ones affiliated with Renewable World Energies. Okay? They're the ones that, you know, we've talked to to say, you know, how much it would cost to tear the dam out and all that, and he says, I do it myself, we do this all the time, they own dams around the country. So we would expect him to come in under 2 million. However, looking at inflation, by the time we draw down the lake next spring, and we start the construction, let's say that we hustle this thing along and we can get it repaired next summer. Let's say that we hustle this thing along and we can get it repaired next summer. Maybe that's ambitious. It may lead into the following year a little bit, probably talking over two million dollars. Yes.
This is a project.
Yes. So this is just simply an estimate. So if we do want to take ownership, then we have to go get three bids, run it past the DNR to make sure it's it's fine. So, um, however, there is a bit of sunlight at the end of this deal. We are eligible. Doesn't mean we're going to get it, but we are eligible for a dam grant from the DNR up to $400,000 a match. That would be would apply to this. So in essence, if it is two million, then if the cost is up to 2.4 million, that matching grant would pay for it. We have experience with this grant. A couple of years ago, we applied for it for which dam, Bob? Atlas Dam, and we did not get it. It's competitive. Uh, the good news is, is when I talked with the DNR, he can't tell me that we're gonna get it. He just simply said, you do meet the criteria. This seems to be a good fit for the kind of dams that we repair. And he said, there is more money in that fund now, but he said it will still be competitive. So we have to guess a little bit, you know, and gamble. Do we do we think we can get this or not? Okay, now regarding Clam Falls contribution, I've talked with Mr. Olson and between the uh, homeowners association or the lake association, whatever it is there, and the town of Clam Falls, we can get approximately $20,000 a year from from Clam Falls area. That's good because that was the other cost that's gonna be involved for the county, which is liability insurance. Right now will be about $17,000 a year for the county. So at least Clam Falls does have skin in the game. They're paying for the liability insurance and now it's a little more than the liability insurance, but that's okay because liability insurance costs are gonna go up over time. And then finally, the contribution from Northwest Electric or Renewable World Energies. Uh, and I've asked this several times. How much is in that escrow and how much can we expect from them to contribute to this project? And they said, whatever we have in the escrow account, and that's it. That amount is $570,000, give or take a few dollars. As time goes on, that amount comes down because they pay for some maintenance or some insurance and that type of thing. But we don't expect it to come down a great deal from this amount. As a reminder, they originally, when they they made the pitch to the county board a couple of few years ago, they had 700, $750,000 in that escrow account. And they said, if you take ownership of the dam, we'll give you all that money. Since then, that money has gone down largely because they are doing things like they were doing some borings, they're doing some engineering and preparation for removing the dam. So they have spent that money, according to them. So you see, it's not a black and white like we would hope. But we do have the two million. We've got skin in the game from Clam Falls. We've got liability insurance that we can get. And we know we have at least $570,000, give or take, from Northwest Electric. Question now is, is do we want ownership? And take on that responsibility? Do we not want ownership or do we want to counter in some way with Northwest Electric and Renewable World Energy?
Vince, can you also share with the board about any other land acquisition that comes along with the dam?
Yeah, it's really just the land right around the dam. It's not a significant amount of land. They do have, I think, a ten acres or ten lot parcel there. But that is not part, that does not come with the dam. And and their explanation was, and I'll try to get this right, I apologize to them if I'm wrong, but basically he said as a public energy company, they can't just give away resources or, you know, there's some, their hands would be tied and they couldn't do that. So that is not part of it. Just to let the board know, when they gave the dam to Balsam Lake, they gave the village of Balsam Lake, I believe, four separate lots, one public access on both sides of Highway 46. So I do know in the past that they have given up their land for kind of putting them in the pot, you know, so to speak. So.
Uh, Brad?
Seven acres down downstream tied to all the way across County Road I and then seven acres downstream.
So they do own some land there. Do you think it'd be possible that part of the the agreement would be that they would have to?
Uh, the the seven acres is included. It's nine acres that's landlocked on the other side.
Yeah, nine acres.
There's nine acres along along the lake that is that is actually landlocked. Uh, from from the land, you know, you can only get to it from on the lake.
And why would they want to keep that? Is there any value to it? Okay. Sure.
My question was, how when they first said that they had a company, they said, get that escrow money. That we had to use that company to repair the dam. And that that guy wanted to do an energy thing. He had so feel that he would, uh, put one of those shoots in or whatever to make some energy and pay 2,000 a year or something back. Is that still on the table?
So the Renewable World Energies is that company, or at least the one, the only one I've dealt with. They're the ones that partner with Northwest Electric and, um, um, what was your question again?
Well, they they have a company that they said we had to use to get the money.
But in fact, we can't do that. I mean, we have to bid that out.
Right, okay. But how about the energy part of it that the guy said?
There's there's no plans. There's no plans for energy. Yeah, that was another company who said, hey, we might be interested in generating electricity.
Could generate itself.
Yeah, but that's.
So they stepped out of it.
Yeah.
Right?
A couple of questions. One was whether the state two million dollars timeline and conditions on that. The other question is, I don't think we ever talked about substance of liability insurance. We get, do we have some advisor is telling us how much liability insurance? This quote, you've got a quote apparently.
Okay.
That aspect of it.
First question regarding the deadline of the state funds. It is available until the next budget or until the end of year, second year, yeah, two years. So and after that, it's technically gone. Uh, if we go under the two million, we don't get the extra money. So like, if, you know, we could do it for less. Uh, and if we go over, they don't go back and give us more. Regarding the liability, Chad, do you remember the details of that?
Yeah, I worked with our broker, who is our broker for all of our liability policies, our various policies. We were granted access to look at the policy, um, that Northwest Electric presently has.
Someone alarm going on?
Yeah. The coverage mirrors the policy they currently have, but meets the requirements we have for liability insurance coverage on all of our policies.
Can you say what it is roughly?
It well, it should be the 10 million like we have on everything else. Um, we have a a $10 million liability package. Um, and it's the the premium's around 16, 70 a year, I believe, is what the quote is. No, uh, no, there's no deductible. We have a fund reserve for deductibles. But the other issue is here, we had to go to the insurer that Northwest Electric has because we would put out to market. There weren't other insurers that would do it. It was the same insurer.
And because the dam has not been brought up to be in our specs, that was one of the.
That's right. And the liability policy may come down once it's up to specs, but we have no idea until until the dam is rebuilt, that they would change the quote on it.
Any other questions?
What do we know about the ongoing yearly maintenance cost? We're looking at taking this on. That's gonna be an every year cost.
Yeah, the ongoing maintenance costs generally are not too high. I mean, if you're talking about mowing and cleaning and that type of thing. Then the other maintenance cost, I think they spent, they they said at one point to me, it was like 10 or 15,000 a year. So in essence, that would be coming from the escrow account. Of course, that would be collecting interest.
Brad?
Follow up on that. And most of that money was lawyer fees, just tied into their the actual cost. They paid an elderly gentleman to watch the dam, so to speak. They paid him $2,000 a year and then the lake bill was.
The lake, I would like to see something put in motion to see the cost of removing the dam.
Yep. We we looked at that and, um, the cost is not as high as we thought it would be. I want to say it was about about 520, 530,000 dollars. Uh, and when I called the DNR and said, hey, this can't be all when you consider the reclamation. And I was considering reclamation as putting it back designed to the way it was 150 years ago, having some nice trees and things along the stream. The DNR doesn't do that. The DNR says, you get it coming down at a certain grade, you throw some seed out there, stop the erosion and you're done. So there's really not any forced DNR reclamation. So.
The Apple River.
I thought that they, uh, they had to worry about all the people downstream.
Yeah. Yeah, so there there's very little cost in the reclamation of this based on what the DNR requires.
So what you're saying is there's enough money in the northwestern column to actually remove the dam still in their escrow account.
Yeah, and 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 because they use their own company, you know, he he would, the the guy at RWE, back on a phone conversation with me, said, I'm not, in his words, I'm not giving a dime over uh, what it's gonna cost me to remove it. And he says, I can take it out of there for 470, cutting out the profit margin. But when I talked with Dave Dahlberg, he said, whatever's in the escrow account, you'll get. So that's the five seven.
I'm gonna go put my two cents worth in here from the constituents that I've talked about, past board people, and they all said, not take another dam. They have had so much trouble with all these other ones, don't take on another hazard. That's their, my opinion from them.
John?
On the other hand, look at our past experience with the country dam. I think that's eyesore that we have to live with forever. And do we want to be responsible? I don't. I I know a lot of people up in that area that they're right in there. And there is a preservation. We're mighty proud of, uh, the Kennedy Dam and the accomplishments that the previous board, previous people have put in place. And I think all of the time for us to step up and do the same thing.
Think if you look at our coming board priorities and you look at investment parks, recreation and tourism, this falls right into play in the way it's been laid out. The expense to the county and the risk to the county is minimal thanks to our help from our legislators. I think this becomes a no brainer if that's what we're truly standing for, is county board priorities.
Hey, I agree too. I want to thank too everyone that's worked on this. We've been talking about this for a few years. I know we were very skeptical in the beginning. I was too, that if this is gonna cost the county money and I to see to see the group of people that have in our staff that has worked together to pull a deal together like this, that actually uh, has no risk to general fund for decades. Uh, I think it's a great, a great plan here. Brad?
Oh, just my sense is, thank you. In my mind, I have to be able to justify to the people I represent, spending money, them paying taxes. Duty to something that most likely, most of them don't don't visit or don't see a benefit from. I think it's a limited number of people who get a benefit from it. It's, um, it's a nice area. You know, it's beautiful, but I don't think it's exactly the epicenter of where people in Pope County go to visit.
It was in Amory, you'd feel a little differently.
Well, I don't know. I talked to the people, Dan, who you represented in the town of Apple River about how they feel about it.
Anyway, I do a lot of sports, man. I utilize a lot of resources.
Any park, a park is gonna be in a different area everywhere, same as the trail. It all can't be in one spot. Everybody doesn't go to one spot. I mean, so you gotta look at it that way too. You can't just.
Look at the fact we've all spent on this tower trail going through the city of Amory. Oh, my gosh. I'll never go use that trail. I won't.
But I mean, that's what we're saying. It's, you know.
Well, maybe the first day equestrian opens up, I'll use it, but then it'll be the last day. John?
I felt the same way with you. I wasn't given them to start with, but once listening to the people.
Right.
And we're talking about tourism and and things like that. And, yeah, it, I'll maybe never use it myself. But I realize thi- this area generates a lot of, a lot of money.
So it doesn't sound like we're gonna change. Anyone else's mind? There's no more questions. We're gonna be able to vote on this.
How many dams do we own?
How many dams do we own?
We own the Atlas and the Kennedy.
Uh, Chad or Bob, do you know?
Bob would know.
What's that? How many dams do we own?
Listen, Kennedy. We only own two other ones. And they've all both been updated and repaired. So I mean, the cost there is. Oh, yeah, Kennedy's a good site.
Blackbrook Dam's for sale, I believe, right? This is that in that district.
What was it?
Oh, Blackbrook, I heard was for sale. I know, but I heard they want this.
You guys, that's a rich town.
I know, they'll buy it.
They'll buy it.
Yeah. How many people have been in it? Like this.
You've had a fall. How many people have been in it?
Yeah, they've walked around it, seen.
I've been there.
Been there quite a few times.
I actually jumped off of it, uh, 50 years ago.
Got quite a camp drawn.
Yeah, it was a kid. We used to go there and jump. Brad?
In the big picture, are we owed anything to put it out on an RFP?
Well, what's I think the next step is, what is the next step? If we come out of this, what are we, what is the administration looking for us to do? Are you looking for a vote?
Well, eh, at some point, we we're gonna have to say a vote. Do we want to, or a direction? Do we go back and renegotiate or do we say, administrator, let's start moving to transfer ownership?
And there's, there is one question regarding the funding, which I've sent an inquiry email today. It's un, I I'm not certain from reading the legislation, how the two million dollars in state funding works, whether it's they give it to us to hold and use or whether we spend the money and then secretly merge. So just so the board's aware, you know, it may.
There's a lot of legal mechanisms that still have to happen to pull this a lot. But you're looking for the board to give direction to say, do we want Mr. Dahlberg to throw in 100 grand more? Or do we let him get by with 570, right?
Yeah, or whatever.
Sure. But then couldn't the direction be to put it out on an RFP? Because until we know what it's gonna cost, everything is up.
I don't know how we can put something out on RFP if we don't own it, we don't put the engineering documents together.
Right.
To put something together, you gotta gotta put a.
There there is, when I talked to the DNR, I said, okay, we need to get it up to a certain standard to pass their, you know, make it suitable to them to hit safety where they like it. But I did ask, I go, are there more than one way to skin a cat? I mean, is is there another way out there that we could do that would be less expensive? And he said, quite possibly. I don't know that. He just said, you know, to get to our standards, there are different ways to get there. And you just put your plan together. That's where we'd have to hire an engineer to say, what are the best different ways to do that? So we'd spend some money to do that.
So one of the questions that comes up with that, when you do an RFP or construction project, if we don't. if we don't, do we have to own the dam? We have to say, we're going to buy it, get the two million, or can we say, we're going, we'll take the two million, we'll meet all this because it looks like it's no cost to the county? And uh.
No, those are the things I'm unsure of. I'm unsure if we have to take the ownership and then get the two million. I, I sent an email today asking some questions.
I think we do because.
We have to take ownership to get the two million.
Yeah, and it just depends on how we receive it, whether we receive it on the back.
Sure.
Can we vote three months ago to move forward on this?
Well, we move forward to this process to get to this point. Now we know where we're at.
Oh, you, we need a real.
Now we need to vote when we come out of committee of the whole, whether we want to go forward with this proposal with these numbers.
Take a vote.
All right. So we're done discussing it. We, we, we're not going to vote in committee of the whole. We're going to come out of committee of the whole. We'll need a motion and a second, and then we can vote on it.
Just one last question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this chicken and the egg on this two million or the, or the cost of like, we can't do an RFP because we don't want to spend the money to get the engineering all figured out, but then we don't really know exactly how hard that two million is going to cover, how much it's going to cover because we've got costs going up. But it feels a little, a little nervous to say yes on something that I don't really know all the answers to. And right? We can't, we don't really know.
Right. So maybe the question will go to Joe. Let's, can we, can we form a, can we form a motion? Can we form a motion to say we approve this uh, with these conditions that we will take ownership of this? But if there's not enough funds to do the project, are we able to say, but can we just tear it out?
And what's our risk? If we get the escrow money that'll cover the cost of taking it out?
Tearing it out.
What difference does it make?
That's, that's the backup is that there's enough, and that's why I asked the question too. There's enough money from Northwestern to just tear it out. So maybe the agreement would be is we take this over. The conditions this all works, if, if, if we don't have enough money to fix it, then it reverts back to Northwestern. Go ahead and tear it out. And we don't take the grant money.
What I would recommend the committee do or the board do when it comes out of committee for its court council draft a resolution to accomplish something along that, that line.
And then it'll come back to us next month.
Right. Um, I would not want to do anything like that through a kind of simple motion, throwing stuff together without a written out and researched and.
So that sounds like a, that sounds like a good legal way to kick it down another month, right?
It would also provide Chad an opportunity to look into.
Dial in some of that.
Right. For that funding, how that funding is going to work.
Did we not vote on this before about if they did not come up with the funds?
Right. We weren't going to do it.
It was done.
Yeah, and that's what we did. We did come up with the funds now. But now it's all paid for and there's extra slush fund. So there's no county money in this. All right. I think that's the great way. I think that is the motion that we will allow. Let's let Joe make, help us with the motion when we come out of this. And that's what we'll vote on. That work? Yeah.
Making a motion is going to regular session.
Got the ARP funds. Uh, Vince, you want to start off or do you want?
I'll, I'll start off. I put together a couple of slides. I didn't know if you were going to be here.
Sure.
Um, the American Rescue Plan, if, if you recall, uh, you received probably a week or two ago uh, from Chad's summary of what it involves. Here's just some bullet points. The total is eight point five million to Polk County. Uh, it must be dedicated to projects uh, by December thirty first, two thousand twenty four. It must be spent, in other words, you don't have to spend it by then, but you got to have it targeted. It must be spent by December thirty first, twenty twenty six. There is considerable leeway on how and, and what you guys decide to do with this money. For example, Chad's analysis said, based on the lost revenue due to COVID, this county can administer basically that first half payment of four point two five million and put it in our general fund as long as it is dedicated to uh, the uh, you know, types of projects. Correct me if I'm wrong. It, you have to dedicate it to certain projects associated with this. But you, it's very flexible on what, how you can use it. The primary goal, and this is what I want to emphasize, the primary goal of this money, this eight and a half million is to counter the negative economic impact of the pandemic. So think about that as county supervisors. How can we use this money in a way that's going to boost the county? Um, targeted uses of ARPA funds include public health expenditures. The good news is, is we did have quite a few grants and funding from the feds and the state that covered things that we, that cost us, but there might be other public health expenditures. Or to invest in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. Now, the opportunity realization, I call it. This is unique. This is a one-time surge of cash to our county that you can make a difference for the entire county. You can improve the lives of current and future generations of Polk County with that much money. It can kickstart or expand our local economy to benefit everyone. And this is my saying, and you've heard me say it before, there are million worthy projects that we can do. But with limited resources of eight and a half million dollars, will diminish the real impact if we try to do everything. So the challenge to you is, how do we want to prioritize what gets done? And that's what we discussed a little bit last month. You can go to the next slide. And you all, and I've received quite a few, eh, a fair number of ideas on how to spend the money. And I have to admit, I got oh, probably six just today and a couple yesterday. So at the last second, people are throwing things at us. And they're not real detailed, but they're just ideas of things that could happen. So what I did was I kind of broke it down into categories and I wanted, I thought it may be something that you as a group may say, yes, those are the categories or take that one out or put another one in, just to give you an idea. So infrastructure, think about that as water, sewer, broadband or transportation. We've had some uh, projects come up where Clayton, for example, needs a new well, or they need water. They've, they've had that problem we had here in Balsam Lake, only they can't fix it. So they're going to have to spend a lot of money to fix it. Um, broadband, we're looking at, in fact, Chad and I have a meeting. Um, we're looking at mapping the first to find out where we have uh, capable internet service and where we don't. And then from there, we could develop policies or actions to help surge high-speed internet to different areas. Parks, trails and tourism is another category. Now you'll notice broadband, parks, trails and tourism, and the next one, crime, safety, drug abuse, those are the priorities that this county board set. So I wanted to make sure, and in fact, you know, a lot of the proposed projects fall into those categories. Um, just think about shovel ready was one of the criteria you said would be important. We, the timing is perfect for the comprehensive trail network and the uh, different types of trails and resources for each of the stakeholders. So we may have, could use these funds for that. Uh, crime, safety, drug abuse, housing and business development. We all know housing is, is an issue. We did a housing study, then COVID hit. Are there ways that we could spark new housing? We've got a couple of recommendations down from Osceola. One's a, a home uh, down payment assistance loan and another one is like a facade loan. It's just an idea. And then water quality and the environment. I've had several ideas from different people about, you know, for example, in our environmental services area, we have manure pits that are damaged, leaking, and they just need to be rebuilt, replaced or taken care of. We've got uh, water quality opportunities with studies or wells that need to be closed. So all those types of things are there. So what I, I throw out to you and you guys decide, you can, you can say, hey, I want to do it a completely different way and that's fine. But remember the criteria, these are the criteria you all mentioned to us last month about what you wanted to evaluate projects on. So the thought being the staff can take all the different projects that are coming in. If you have other ideas, if we have other ideas, we're going to take all the projects that have come in and we'll either categorize them or we might combine them with others or tweak them so that we can then rate them by these criteria. I'm sorry, the uh, next slide. The fit with board priorities, economic impact, shovel ready, cooperation. Is it just us or are the local communities helping? Total cost versus ROI. That just means, is it big enough? Is that something that's really going to have an impact or not? You know, for the whole county. Broad impact, level of need, those types of things. Our thought is, one option is we come back next month with some or, or, or all the different projects and maybe we combine some or whatever. But we can give you a scorecard on each one on how they fit those criteria. Not that we're deciding, we'll give you, ba, give our reasoning, here's how we score them. You guys can change it. Or you guys can pay attention to it or not, but it will give you some idea. And, and what I found is I start looking at ideas. I go, oh yeah, but if we also did this, you know, and so I think you all will do that too. You know, if you did something with parks and trails, you could say, hey, not only could we do things for these stakeholders, but could we also build lanes or ways for trail users to spend money in each of our communities? You know, a trail doesn't have a big ROI on its own, but when the people come there, you want them to stop. You want them to go in and buy something, eat, camp or whatever, or find a place to live. So that's just an idea. I'm sorry I took so long. So.
Oh, that's, I think that's important. Um, yeah.
With this money and cool though, like say the updates on this building, right? Energy and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we're, we're looking at borrowing money and stuff. We wouldn't have, but we could put it towards the upgrades on this to get it more energy efficient.
Yeah, we talked about that before, Chad. He does.
So if, if the board decides to capture this money as lost revenue, then it goes into the fund balance. It can be used for anything the government can normally do. I just have to track it for reporting for the, for the audit procedure.
Well, that's one idea that wasn't on the screen tonight, that Kim's saying we should consider using some of the resources for the construction project.
Let me return to the fund balance. Or maybe Joe can help me. What kind of, does that require a three quarters vote or a simple majority?
Well, so if, if we build it into the budget for twenty twenty two, then you can spend it without a budget amendment. If you do it mid-year at any point, it's not a budget item and requires a budget amendment.
The question I had was for Vince. So are you, if I'm understanding you correctly, maybe I'm not. Are you saying within thirty days, you want all the projects submitted so you can start looking and, you know, putting pieces of those projects together? Because big project that has a larger impact is going to take a long time to put together just to be able to submit it. So if we're talking about maybe not doing a bunch of small projects, but doing big projects and especially infrastructure projects must take time to put together. So probably, I don't know if we want to think about making a deadline or, or putting some kind of timeframe in place by which projects need to be submitted. I mean, we don't have to obligate this for another two years. So, you know, it is, I guess I would like to see some consideration of a timeframe or when people who would like to ask for some of this money of, of them being, you know, getting enough time to put together a decent proposal.
For Doug? Tracy?
Well, I kind of agree with Brad's thought process there on a timeline, getting something out to the people of Polk County, whether it be businesses, municipalities, any of those, so that they have enough time to put proposals together to submit. You know, whether it be two months, whether it be, you know, I mean, I think we kind of agreed on that at last meeting that we would kind of throw it out to people so that with some kind of timeframe, so that they had an opportunity put in something if they so chose.
Yeah. Um, and we did. Uh, and even Clayton, you know, I have to send them reminders. I haven't gotten anything from Clayton yet, but I know what they want. And I will say this, that we're not getting an engineer's report on what they want done. We're getting a paragraph that says, I'd like this boat landing replaced. Or I'd like, you know, we need a new well in Clayton. Um, in, in our mind though, we, we do have ideas. We have an engineer tech and we have other people who've been involved in these things and we can estimate uh, what something might cost and we could put that in the budget for next year if we wanted to. The other thing is many of these ideas for infrastructure, we might say, uh, well, just as an idea, you could allocate like a grant to say, if you have an infrastructure project that meets these criteria that you all decide, meaning that we're making sure that it's being used in a way that's going to promote economic development or housing or whatever. Uh, we could say this grant's available to you and if you don't use it by a certain date, it comes back into the pool. Which forces them then to say, hey, this is important to us. That would be a way to get money to every corner of the, of the county.
Darren?
So some of these things like broadband, for example, there's a boatload of money coming in from the feds, from the state for broadband. So when we look at things like that, and I'm just using that as one example, we should also be looking at what other options are available for a new well or for broadband or for some of these projects. Because why use these funds if there's other funds available too? I was, I, I think that's important.
Mike, you had your hand up?
I'd like to ask Vince if he could have that PowerPoint circulated around it.
Can you go back to the page where you just?
I'm not just saying after the meeting.
Do, do you all?
As you're taking.
Yeah, I'll email it to all of you.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I, um, I just.
Yeah, I just want to, yeah, share it or see it again. I want to go back to where Mike was saying, um, the, the list of our priorities that our board has already, our board has already kind of said, these are our priorities. We've already defined our priorities. You know, one of the things I want to throw out there is the phone calls I get on all this. And I talk to a lot of different committees and, or communities and boards, people, um. Another things that everyone seems a little concerned about is, you know, every community could come up with a project. Everyone's got a town hall. Everyone's got a boat access in their town. You know, everyone's got a road or a trail. And what I keep hearing is what, uh, those are our priorities. We've already, we've already worked on our priorities. We set those. And uh, what has the boats banged through the overall county, right? What? You know, the water tower in Clayton's fine, right? Uh, Balsam Lake had to do a water tower project, but you know, does the people of Milltown or Balsam Lake want to see funds go to Clayton? Does Clayton's people want to see the funds going to the dam? You know, money? And if we're going to get into this, you know, we're all going to vote for projects in our backyard. And to me, that's a little troubling to think how long that process will take. And I've talked to administrator about this, that you know, someone said it here tonight about ranking or having time, right? So, you know, if we could set funds available to say, these are our priorities, I think we need to move on this quicker than I think people think around here. And I think the county board needs to send a clear message to.
And I think the county board needs to send a clear message to administration on what we want to do. This is our issue. We need to say, these are our priorities, and somehow move this ball because it takes a long time for a government to develop a project, like someone said Fran, to get it, to develop it, to engineer it, and then to fund it. Um, gosh, we won't. And then at the last minute, we're going to have a few million dollars here, where we're going to just start to get rid of it. But if we're going to do something big, I hear from the community, go something big. Be a game changer. Don't get lost in what did we do 10 years from now to say, oh, hey, we did a, we did a water tower, we did a sewer extension. You know, we repainted our building with the money, and we put new carpet in. Uh, so that's where I'm hearing that, and I just wanted to throw that out there, that I, I think we've taken too long. There's already other county boards in the state that are already designating funds. Start moving. Now, they're not being specific, just like we weren't with the Lime Quarry Fund. We put that million and some dollars in the Lime Quarry Fund into a designated trail fund. And now staff is bringing us projects, and they're picking away. They've evaluated it. Highway Department, we got engineering going on, we got our PT going. I mean, that's, that's been a good way to say, here's a chunk of money. Staff brings us these ideas, and then we say, hey, yeah, go grab that money. And, uh, I, I just, I would like for the board to send that message sooner than later, that, you know, here's the list. Is housing and business development a priority of the county board? I, I don't know that it is. So why would, I mean, maybe we should. Yeah, Joe.
I think last meeting, I mentioned it to Vince, but I didn't call. The priority that I would like to see was the recycling center and a fair.
Are those on our board priorities? Are those our board priorities, or are those specific projects?
Projects.
Projects, okay. So I'm going back to putting, you know, you got to develop a process before we start awarding projects. So let's say that's your projects. You think those are two important projects. They will come up to a ranking to see, we're already going to be voting. Those are projects that are already in the process of being worked on. We already, we're already working on those. Um, Brad?
Um, just a couple of questions. I have one comment. I think that anything that's going to base is going to benefit everybody. Other question I have, and I don't know if Joe or Chad or who can answer this. This is just a what-if question. So we have our county board priorities.
Well, they're not them. They're them.
Yeah, I understand.
Right, it's not all of those.
What if down the line, somewhere, somebody decides that what we spent this money on wasn't appropriate to the guidelines of the ARPA funding? We going to get sued, or we going to have to give money back? What's going to happen?
So as long as, there's two paths you can take with the money. First path is, you can recover it as lost revenue. If you recover it as lost revenue, which we've run the calculations, we can recover all of the first tranche as lost revenue. Government can spend that money on anything government's lawfully allowed to spend money. The only requirement for reporting is, I have to show a direct line from the expenditure back to that money, that that's the money that was spent, and it's spent within the timeline in the legislation. If the board chooses not to go that route and goes, and chooses to keep it for the specific pots, then we have to look at the constantly changing guidance. And if you notice in the executive summary, I put a couple pieces in there that came out like the week I was writing it about tourism, about broadband, because they're changing constantly. Right now, there's hundreds of pages of guidance that's coming out on this. It will be incumbent on staff, if the board chooses to go that route, that we have to stay up on the guidance and make sure we're in compliance. So if the board decides we want to go on this path, and Vince says, this is the project we're going to do, and that's where it falls to me to run it and vet it through.
Supervisor Duncan said, I think this is standard government. We have corporation counsel and administration that will make sure that one of us doesn't have some harebrained idea, and we try to convince eight of us to go along with it, that's illegal. Staff is going to stop us. Corporation counsel is going to stop us.
Can I ask one more question? So I understand.
Well, there's other people. I mean, is it, go ahead.
Just one more question.
Yes.
So if we obligated all of this fund balance, we're still required to span that dollar amount within that specified timeframe, yes or no?
Yes, ma'am. Hey, Doug?
I guess, reading that list, I didn't quite understand your comment to Joe.
Yep.
Because, yes, the environment, or the recycling center and the fair have been on the list, but trails have been on the list for a long time. I can pick any of those.
No, I'm saying the county board priorities. You see the.
I see. I know what they are. But Joe was asking a question about why can't he have those on there?
Could be.
Well, and they have a.
It could come under projects. They're, it's a, it's a specific project. If you want to spend $2 million on the fair, that's a project. The fair is a priority. And the recycling center, we have it on general government. It's on our agenda every month. So it's, it's already a project we're working on.
I understand that.
Yeah.
We're coming up with projects to spend this money on.
Those are projects, and are we going to, are those projects going to fall under board priorities? Do we want to say we're going to follow board priorities, or do we want to go into projects that are board projects?
It'd be hard to draw the line, I think.
Well, that's why.
To me, it is.
Yeah.
That's that over here.
Mike?
Couple of comments. One, we put our little post-its up on the wall, or whatever we usually do to establish these priorities. But thinking that maybe I and other members of the board, given the eight and a half million dollars, we wouldn't otherwise have had. But number one, I think I want to say today, I like the concept project is big enough, it's going to be a game changer. Also, that, uh, we would, uh, perhaps have some different priorities under the circumstances we're looking at here. Might have been looking more some of these things, like we had one discussion, for example, broadband, that there may be a whole lot of other financing sources. Priority, and there were some of these others that maybe would not get funding, it wouldn't happen unless we had a pretty big chunk capital money to put into
Right.
into the project, which would be enough to make it happen. I'd like to take that viewpoint of at least a portion of this. And I was asking Chad, is it more than just circumstance that the first tranche all matched our deficit, or is that, is that just coincidence?
Um, they have a, they have an antithetical calculation for how you calculate lost revenue. It's, it's just a weird thing how it turns out.
Well, I, I just, I was surprised, but I thought it would be less than that.
All right, Brad? No, it would, it's just the way they calculate it.
I understand. We'd have to make a decision if you want that tranche to go in. Have that opportunity to do that.
Right, okay. Brad?
So it, it seems like if you want something big that affects everybody, um, a proportion of this money could easily go to county highways. Um, I mean, if, if Mo had an extra, whatever, X amount of these dollars to get two, three years ahead on highway projects. Um, we all go out there and drive down our county roads, and think, oh, they're nice and smooth at 55 miles an hour in our vehicles. We'll jump on most county roads in this county on a tractor. And once you hit 15 miles an hour, you can't stand the steam there. Um, there, there absolutely junk every year when our town does road review. We drive on county roads to get around and think, boy, it's great to get to town and plant holes, because our junk roads are five times better than any county road. And I think that affects everybody. County roads. And, and just being able to get a year or two jump on some of them roads that are already in a project, and just highways protected out four, five, six years. Um, and just being able to move, if it's just a year or two ahead on some of those road projects, I think affects everybody and wherever they are, because they're already set. It isn't like, oh, go pick my road. Mo knows what he's doing for the next five years of here. So to be able to say, just, just jump a year.
It's another, it's another project.
But if I may, as, if you look at those categories, that's all we're trying to do, so the highways would fit into the infrastructure, and what we would do is kind of put projects in each category, if you think those are the category. The recycling could go into the environment, or it could go into infrastructure, I suppose. Uh, and, and we would then start with the grading of each one to say, how do they, with score? And then we show you the scores and how staff came up with it, and then you may disagree with it, and say, no, it doesn't have as big an impact as you think, or it's not shovel-ready like you think. But that's fine. We don't care. But you all could look at it and say, okay, we see what you've done. Let's change it this way, and then you vote on which project. We could probably, you know, maybe you just prioritize, and you go until you run out of money. I don't know. Or we could probably give some type of ballpark estimate.
So are we going to go around the room? Because obviously, everyone, Joe, you know, uh, you got a couple ideas, you've got a couple ideas, I've got a couple, John, we all got ideas. We go around the room at what point? And then my other question is, is, there's an election in April, right? So are we able to, are we going to have another, are we going to have the rest of the money before April?
No, the second tranche will arrive no sooner than.
So is there any implication, let county board priorities change, the board changes, and there's different direction? That the next batch of money then will be used for something different? So should we be focusing only on our first batch of money? And wait till after the election to do the second batch? Or can we pre-low this and say, this board says we want to put this much money into a trail fund, this much money into a infrastructure budget, or this much money into drug abuse? And then, or is the next board going to be able to go in and tweak that?
Yeah, um, I mean, it, if it's fund balance and it's not restricted by law, the board can change it at any time.
Okay. All right. John?
Could this be on the agenda of all five of our committees in the ARP? That way, like Brad said, that would come to the highway.
So you're saying, let's let the committees generate?
The September agenda, why don't we have this on all five of our at one channel? We can sit here all night.
I know we can, and we're going to do this every month. I feel like we're spinning our wheels.
The committee's really having to address this, and I think they should.
You're just asking, are these, what's their, those five lines?
Yeah.
And whatever the idea is, or whoever it is, it goes in one of those five categories. And then it comes back to.
If it does. If it doesn't, then we'll have it in a separate category. I just,
Right.
I just took the ideas.
Other, other. I'm fine with that. You can throw whatever ideas you want at them as supervisors, and they come back in, in one of those five or in other category, and then we see what they are.
Like someone said, what happens in six months when the fair knows, or, you know, hey, this is, I don't know what we're going to do with the fair, but at some point, there's going to be a discussion about the fair again. Uh, or the recycling center. The recycling center might, might not get, uh, direction on what they need for a year from now. Realistically. So how do we bring stuff into the, how do, how do we bring things in later?
I, I do. I mean, there is one thing that came out, uh, this week, or late last week, that we were informed of Monday. I have to do an interim report August 31st and summarize by category. Not, not specifically what we're going to spend the funds on, but, you know, if they're going to fit in that category. So that's why I asked the question. Does the board want it as lost revenue? Is the board going to spend this much in one of the five category, other five categories? Just because I have to report it on that first interim.
What do you think?
Why wouldn't you report it as lost revenue? We've still got all the options and everything else we need to.
I, I will do whatever the board wants. I just.
Cover your 31 report.
Yeah, I just can't do that without.
We need the board to say that.
Just say it in a committee, the whole, or do we have to actually make a?
Maybe a consensus out of the committee.
I would feel better with a vote.
With the vote after.
If I'm signing for, I'd feel better.
All right, so you'll make sure we get that drafted, that result, or that motion after the board, the right. Anything else you need for us tonight, then? Or did you hear enough, or you could advance, or do you want something more?
You know, I, I.
I personally just think housing and business development, that's not a priority of the county, to do business development housing.
And you know what? You, you very well could be right, but let us go through the process. Since people are submitting their ideas, let us go through the process of judging them, rating them.
Sure.
And then you guys decide, rather than just, you know.
Well, who put it on there right now?
I did.
Okay, so it's just you picking something?
No, it was based on requests that came in from the county.
I don't think everyone's made all their requests, so I think there, I think we still, if that's what we're going to do, then is we're not, we should set priorities. We should reach out, like one of the supervisors said. Tracy said everyone should have more time then to set the categories than just what we've got until today. Then I think we have a limited list. Right, Tracy? That's what you said.
And I think it's best to vet what your potential people, I mean, maybe it does fall within that. Maybe there's something that we're not seeing. Maybe it's a huge impact. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just challenging it a little bit. That's all I'm doing, Mr. Administrator.
It's fine. You decide, not me.
Yeah, the other thing we need to consider as we look at communities, municipalities, is all those got funds as well. They better be utilizing their funds to fund their own community first.
Right.
Before they look for the county's funds.
We're matching.
Right, exactly. Tracy?
So can I just touch on what Dan just said? So in the conversation with that Vince and I and Terry had with the village of Clayton, what we did was, based on how you can use your funding that you were allocated, the town of Clayton would put our hundred and some thousand dollars into the village of Clayton water and sewer, because we have all around Lake Magna. The village of Clayton would also take their piece of funding from ARPA, put into this, plus they have monies from other allocations, and ask for a certain specific piece from the county's fund. So there's three pieces of funding, plus coming from different, or the little piece that they're asking for, for the county to complete this. So I mean, we are putting in.
Sure.
I wasn't suggesting your.
I know, but I'm just saying that this is, the things that we need to think about is, if they have the pieces to fund this stuff, and we're willing, because obviously the criteria that we've been given, it doesn't fit us, except for water and sewer. Um, you know, I just, I just think there's more to this than, and we're not going to solve it all tonight, obviously. We all have different ideas. We all have, you know, but.
Leveraging more money that way, too.
Yes.
It'll leverage, you're getting more from the state and everything.
Well, you know, same example, Milltown Township using their funds, because they're building a new town shop. They're using one for a safe room for voting and all this stuff, so they're putting a hundred grand down payment on their new building. I know they would love to get some funds from us, because they're matching funds. And that's what I'm just worried about, is every community, we're going to be sitting here and voting for our own communities. And that's, that's where I worry about how broad these categories are. Is that that, uh, we're going to end up throwing 50 grand here, 100 grand here, 100 grand, 50 grand, 50 grand, and we're going to look back and go, what did we use this money for? And where at some of these communities, they can already factor that in, and they can already finance that than for us to, or even throwing the money into this building. We can bond and borrow money at super low interest rate. Do we really want to use this cash for repainting our building? Does that make sense? To some people, it probably does. You know, but.
You don't have to borrow at all.
You don't have to borrow at all, but we have.
Well, that's zero interest.
But we, we, you just heard tax, you just heard, uh, how much money we've got in tax revenue. General fund went up a lot of money again this year. So the county's flush with cash. So the county's flush with cash.
We should fix it.
Yeah, I just, I just feel like, at some point, we gotta get off of this merry-go-round and, and move on, but.
Well, and I, I think also, partially, I, I worry, we're kinda, we even have a, a process for how a town. Just wanna make sure that, that we have a mechanism and people understand, and we've noticed it, or let it go out, notice it out, that people know that they can, quote-unquote, apply. And what is the applications even look like, and do matching ones get ranked higher? I mean, it's kind of a free-for-all right now, so.
Or is it a county project? We got a trail, we got a trail comprehensive plan coming. We got a million dollars. With, with that, with that trail comprehensive plan, that's probably coming to the county board this year. A million dollars isn't gonna be close to paying for all that project. Well, it's, it's gonna pay a tiny part, and we're gonna have to borrow money, or we're gonna have to find funds. Well, there's a project for the whole county. We could take the whole eight million dollars, put it into a trail fund, and we could have a trail system as good as Hayward.
As long as we just have a process that we're communicating with.
And, and then we don't need to get down into fifty grand, fifty grand, fifty grand. And that's what I'm worried about is, or the street idea, that, the street is, it affects everybody, the roads, the highways.
Came up for a gentleman of the law, I think it's nine o'clock.
Wait, she's gonna get a second? So again, is it clear, Administrator, what we're doing? This is the problem right now with our county board. We didn't decide a darn thing tonight, and we're just picking the can again. And that's what I'm gonna keep saying to you guys every night. Uh, did you get anything?
We will come back with a, a summary of ideas. And, and I think what we will do is take the liberty to say, here are the ideas that came from Farmington. Here's the idea that came from Clamp Falls. But we may combine them. We may, we may boost them up to make them broader impact. And, and let you guys look at them, and at least have something to discuss. I think what other counties that have decided where to use their money, it's because they have some hot topic on their mind, and the timing is right, and they said, our nursing home's in trouble. Fix the nursing home.
Right.
Well, we're, we're in that position where we've jumped ahead on some of our priorities. We've done some things. Now we get to be a little creative. So everybody's got great ideas. The newspaper's gonna say, if you got ideas, send them in. If you have ideas, or if you've got connections with your towns, like Tracy did with Clayton, said, yes, talk to the county. It may or may not get funded. It may not be, well, something that this county will say we wanna do, but they can submit them. But it gives us ideas.
But here, here's what I have a problem with. I'm gonna go to my township, Milltown, I'm gonna go to the Village of Balsam Lake and the Village of Milltown. Those are the, my three districts. And say, hey, they want ideas for projects. So we're all gonna spend time thinking about projects. And they're gonna come to the county board, and it's like, no, we don't want any of those projects. That's what I'm afraid of. Because I feel like, again, we're starting to find projects without a process. And that's, that's where, I don't wanna do that. I don't wanna go to my township, my villages, and say, hey, what do you guys want to, what, what, what do you guys, how much money do you need from the county for a great project? And then it comes to the county, we all spend all this time, and it's like, no, 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 Clayton got it. Hey, that's gonna cause a lot of controversy on this board when that guy comes to vote on that stuff. And I'm still having a problem with this process, and what I saw tonight, I have a problem with it. And I am not comfortable with it, and someone else is gonna help walk us through this, but this doesn't make sense to me. And I have a problem with it, because we still haven't set what our priorities are. Are we gonna fund priorities? And tell the public, then, these are our priorities. These, you gotta come up, if that's what we wanna do is, are we gonna fund all the municipality projects? It sounds like tonight, that's what everyone wants to do. And if that's it, then I'm gonna go to work. But if that's not what we're gonna do, I'm not gonna go waste everyone's time trying to develop projects that we're not gonna fund, right?
I agree. I think we need to get a solid process in place, because we're just spinning our wheels here right now. And we're gonna have all these projects. I mean, it's like, like a free-for-all now. I mean, it's, county's got money, get your name in the list. And I think we need to look at it from the big picture and go back to those priorities and say, what, how do we, how does this help this priority in a big, in the long run? At the county level.
I, I already got, Lake District's asking me about oat ramps, weed harvesters, alum treatment. You name it. And it's like, well, Balsam Lake just paid for the alum treatment. How are we gonna give money to Bone Lake or Round Lake? Their alum, your lake, Cedar Lake, they already spent money on an alum treatment. How are we gonna? Uh, oh, I, I'm just stumped on this, and I'm sorry. I, I might be slow, or I got an issue here, but I don't understand the process.
What if next month we come back and the board decide, what are we gonna do? Is there gonna be county projects and things that county spends their money on? Or is it gonna be town projects? Because.
There you go.
I, I see it happening that, okay, well, yeah, Clamp Falls, McKinley, Lorraine, Westwood, and Frederick don't care what happened in Southern Polk County. I'm gonna vote no, and they're gonna vote no for something that I want in Northern Polk County, or my towns want, that I covered. And I think that becomes the issue. It becomes down to it, like somebody said, it's fifty thousand here, it's a hundred thousand there. And at the end of the day, we've spent, is it four and a half million or eight million? Let's say four and a half right now. And, and what did we get? We got a little bit over there, we got a little bit here, and a little bit here. We didn't get, we didn't get anything big. We didn't, we didn't get no game-changing. We didn't fix recycling, we didn't fix roads, we didn't fix, we just done a whole bunch of little things around the county. And I'm not sure that's what, not saying that we shouldn't, just saying I think that's where we need to be at, is, is the decision of, do we wanna do county things? Or do we wanna do in a show?
I understand that. See, I, I do understand that. If that's what we wanna do, and we wanna go, if we wanna say we're gonna, because then I'll go work, I'll work my tail off for my districts to bring some very valuable projects. And I'm gonna tell them, let's get ready, because you're gonna be competing against every other community in the county for those funds. So we better have rock-solid projects. I'll go work every day for my communities for that. But I don't wanna go do it if we're gonna now go, no, we're gonna put it all in trails and roads. Tracy?
I think where the communication and the, maybe the misunderstanding came from is when we initially, whether it be municipalities, whether it be county, we got an ARPA list, the guidelines, if you will. On there were certain things that you could use those funding for. Maybe things have changed, maybe things have been added, I'm not really sure. But I think where we're getting these other communities' involvement is, they see this, oh, water and sewer, broadband.
Yep.
You can use these things, okay? So the county's part of us, so why not reach out to them for assistance if that's, you know, if that can happen?
I get that.
So now what we've done as a county is we've taken that list of the ARPA funding that they're used to seeing, and what they're putting in their projects specifically for. And now we've changed it, and we've put it to what our board priority list is, which is totally throwing everything in a different direction.
Under the bus.
Well, no, no, because the communities are supposed to use their money for those projects.
They are.
Now, it, it never said, it, it never said for the communities are gonna get a piece of what the county needs. Are, are we here for the county? Are we here for, uh?
For the county.
Are we here for a village project? A village project, you guys should be in your villages, and I just gave an example of our township spending their money on their project. They didn't, they're not waiting to do their project, to get the county handsome, another chunk. But I get what you're saying, but they're two different entities, you know, that, you know. We got county roads, we got county parks, we got county trails, we got a county building. What else do we own? Hey, you haven't said nothing tonight. Because you got a lot of.
I can tell you, I can tell you, townships and their, and their government, major projects are.
Right.
That's the majority of their budget. Now, if they could catch up, road improvement. I mean, I'm not talking about the blacktop itself necessarily. The tree line. We've got hazardous. We used to run into a car running off, off the road, right feet against the tree, you know, in the thirty-foot, uh, safety zones, so to speak.
Right.
So there's a lot of improvement, and that's what townships are trying to do with it.
Sure.
It's pretty gonna get that. Now villages have a different problem.
Right.
You can deal with them as you wish. But once the towns catch up to their road, any other improvements that they may, and bridges, I should. And I got bridges that some of our agricultural people can't even get to, their own car.
Sure.
Legally. I mean, I can't cross it with my own truck. Wow. So there's a lot of improvements that gotta be made. Once we catch up on that, we went far behind. Urban cost. I started, it was like twenty thousand dollars a mile, that's a hundred and fifty hours. Mile, put onto its black. But so, once they catch up, then they can do their own financing, bonding, borrowing, whatever they want, they have the money to do it. They need that shot in the arm, but the shot in the arm is gonna come from their constant expense of deteriorating transportation roads. Emphasizing that cause. They've got their own, they've got their spend, that's gonna come to the county.
Your, your opinion is infrastructure is a priority. Sure.
Then you add another.
I know.
Pass to that, we're just gonna pass this huge, maybe pass this huge infrastructure bill. What is that gonna do? Is that gonna be another influx of money into towns and counties for road and infrastructure projects? So, you know.
Don't, don't spend that.
Well, I know.
I know Milltown roads are in pretty good shape, so I don't know, and we seem to have a little.
Good shape?
Yeah.
You've gotta take a total look at the road.
But now I'm wondering why our township then didn't decide to put the hundred grand into roads, they put it into a town shop. That was their choice. Right.
That's fine. The town shop doesn't get a deteriorator's fast town road.
Right. So, there you go, administrators.
My goal is to generate discussions.
You got it. Okay, we had a motion by the guy in the corner. Seconded by Joe. Uh, all agree to come out of committee of the whole?
Yeah.
I'm saying aye. Olsen, sign.
Okay, so we got some motions to act on real quick here. Joe?
Motion one, you have to move that, uh, the whole board is going to be making the determination that whole board is gonna be overseeing the process of drawing the district lines, as opposed to appointing a committee. So that's your first motion.
So let's make that. Who wants to make that motion? O'Connell?
I'll make it.
You got a second? Seconded by Fran. All in favor, say, by saying aye. Carries.
Second motion is, uh, you need to make a motion to direct staff to prepare the tentative county supervision district plan. And for that plan to set the number of county board supervisors at fifteen. That motion.
That's the second motion. Do we have a motion? Who's gonna, Sharon? Seconded Fran. Favor by saying aye.
I had a vote for a discussion yet, but I can't hear with this mask on. I'm sorry, I just.
Hey.
A little louder, please.
So just to recite what that motion is, direct staff to prepare the tentative county supervision district plan. And for that plan to set the number of county board supervisors at fifteen. And then, I suppose, voted on it, but there could be an amendment to that to say that it gets taken up at the next meeting, but that isn't necessary. I think we can take that up on that.
Yeah. And what's the next?
Third motion is the motion, uh, move to direct staff to present options and draft a potential resolution for acquisition of Clamp Falls dam, uh, dam at the next general government committee. And, uh, all right. All right, start over. Move to direct staff to present the options and draft a potential resolution for acquisition of the Clamp Falls dam to be presented at the next general government.
I don't think so. I think we wanted at that committee of the whole.
You want committee of the whole to take it up?
I do.
Okay. That's the motion.
That's the motion. Okay, we got a, uh, first, and we got a second from John. All in favor? Anyone opposed to that one?
Okay, I gotta do it.
Yeah, you wanted to, you wanna be opposed, right, Joe? Okay. Please, there's. Was that a roll call vote just happened? Okay. All right, what's the next one?
It's Chad's motion.
All right, the next motion, move to direct the county administrator to claim the total amount first tranche of American Rescue Plan funds as lost revenue, as defined by the Treasury Department interim final.
Joe got a motion to approve, seconded by Olsen. Any discussion on that? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Carries.
I see what to do. Right. Based on that long conversation, the administrator.
Oh, he's on his own on this one.
He has no idea.
This is, this is his baby. I think it's clear that if next month it goes that way again, he's gonna get beat up.
Think that addresses everything, Madam Clerk?
Okay. Any comment, Administrator?
Uh, discussion possible, action on the agenda items, standing committee agenda items, and proposed resolution ordinances acted on by standing committees. Environmental Services Resolution Number Thirty-six dash twenty-one, Resolution to amend Polk County Code Chapter Twenty-six, regulating activities in the county forest. We have a quick explanation of that by the chair.
So, if you read it, you've seen all the updates on that, so that it goes into our new fight.
Vote unanimously in committee?
Yes.
Okay, we have a vote, uh, we got a motion to approve that resolution?
A second.
First and seconded. Any discussion? If none, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Resolution Number Thirty-nine dash twenty-one, urging the state of Wisconsin to adequately fund state agency regarding capel regulations that groundwater and air quality. That one I'm gonna step down on, because I'm the author of it. And I'm guessing nobody will let in discussion. So John, would you take over? I, I'm guessing you guys want me as a board to step down, right?
Karen?
That's the rules, yeah.
Look at Johnny anyway. He was short.
Yeah.
Keep it short? Hold on to your, hold on to your belt, Joe. It's not gonna be short.
You're gonna explain the resolution as a, a motion to bring it to the floor first.
I'll make, I'll make a motion. Uh, yeah, I'll make the motion to bring it to the floor.
Seconded by Jay Luke.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk. Make the presentation, and then we'll have a call for discussion.
Thanks, John. So I brought this to Environmental Services, and I also did do an update at Health and Human Services of why, what the intent of this. Uh, I, basically, this is from all the months of people calling me, sending me emails, me drafting letters, taking phone calls. And I figured this would give us an opportunity to tell the public again, from the county side, on what we think's important, what we're doing. It seems like, uh, the newspaper not taking a hit on you guys, but you sure like writing big stories about everyone out front and guys bringing dead pigs in a bucket, or corn in a bucket, or whatever they're bringing to the county. So there's a lot of misinformation out there, and, uh, the first whereas clause, concentrated animal feeding operations have the potential to negatively impact groundwater and air quality if they do not comply with strict business practices. I think that's pretty clear. We all understand that. Whereas some, some swine capels, both within Wisconsin and outside of the state, have created significant fear in the. Whereas some, some swine capoes, both within Wisconsin and outside of the state, have created significant fear in the community. About the potential negative impact of new and expanding capoes. The clear thing is there is created significant fear in the community, and clearly, we've been hearing about that every single month. For quite a while. Whereas Polk County Board of Supervisors is dedicated to protecting our groundwater and air quality from all types of potential contaminants, including but not limited to capoes. Pretty clear that, I think we're all for. You know, everything that everyone says in public comment, I don't think there's a supervisor in here that doesn't wanna keep our county clean in the way it is. Whereas the Wisconsin Supreme Court and the Clean Wisconsin Inc. versus Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources recently. Decided that the DNR has broad regulatory authority to establish targets in specific enhanced conditions. When issuing and/or renewing gluten discharges, system permits such as animal units maximums and off-site groundwater monitoring. Uh, that's something that has just happened. Talked to Lee about adding that into this resolution. Whereas local governments, uh, government units, particularly counties, are statutorily limited to their ability to regulate capoes. I think this is a very important whereas clause. Um. It seems like the public thinks that the county has total control over who comes and operates a hot capoe in our community, and we don't. It's a state issue. Uh, we do have some impact on it, but for this to be continually being discussed and being broadcasted and misinformation being put out there, that this is a county issue. Uh, it is a state issue. Especially like what just happened up in Burnett County, where the DNR actually, and, and the public needs to know that, rejected the capoe application. So all this talk that there's a capoe coming and the DNR doesn't do their job. Uh, clearly is inaccurate information because the DNR reject, rejected it. Uh, whereas Polk County has previously enacted a conditional use permit zoning regulations to provide some level of local control of locations and requirements of future or expanded swine capoes. However, the public continues to express concerns that the CUP process is not sufficient despite the limitations of the county underlying authority. There again, I think it's about. That whole issue is, the county has done something. Even hear, I even hear previous supervisors that sat on the county board get up in public comment and say. Guys are rolling out the red carpet. He sat on the county board for years and never did a thing, and there's capoes been in this county for many, many years. I think, I think the press misses these important topics.
Last story.
Um. Now therefore be it resolved. The county board of supervisors hereby urges the state of Wisconsin to adequately fund the Department of Natural Resources and Department of Agriculture. Trade and consumer protection, so they can vigorously monitor and regulate all the existing and future capoes to the full extended authority. That came completely from Chris and Frederick last month, asked us to do something. And he asked us to, and I thought it was one of the first people that finally was reasonable and didn't just blame the county board for not doing nothing. They ask us to do what we've done in the past by asking for these agencies to be funded properly. Polk County Board of Supervisors, the state legislator, governor, to fully fund the various regulatory agencies, and that they have the adequate, uh, resources and monitor and regulate capoes, so. Sure, this is gonna spur on some discussion, and, uh. That's why I did this, so we can talk about this, and we can hopefully get the facts out to the public. I hope we can stop all this activism out there that love, it's like the virus. You know, oh, you know, Supervisor Olson just got some, uh, some stuff in his arm because now they can track him. It's the same thing, this virus stories out there, the capoe stories are just as bad. We have all these activists in our county that are running around, and I get these calls, I got calls from the doctors. Hey, I was at this Hitler meeting, and they said this, this, and this was gonna happen. There's a capoe, there's even tonight, there's, there's a capoe coming to Polk County. There is no capoe, swine capoe coming to Polk County. And then when you tell them what we've done. And no board in history has done anything to give any protection to this county for capoes. I do not wanna live next to a swine capoe. I'll do everything in my ability, and that's why a conditional use is a good thing we passed. Our communities can work on this. Our communities can have involvement. It's a good thing we did this, and then for people to still show up and say, oh, would you guys consider the Bayfield ordinance? We already did. We already had the DNR tell us it was illegal. So, and then we have supervisors that are on this board right now that, in Health and Human Services, said. I know where the manure is being spread in Polk County. We know there's gonna be these fattening farms. So I asked her, bring that information here tonight. I wanna see, I, I heard the supervisor on a television show. With another person that ran for county board saying that we know there's immigrants, migrant workers living in Polk County that are being locked in their buildings, and they can't come out in public and tell us what's going on. It's one lie after another.
I didn't see that.
One accusation. So I'm gonna.
I'm gonna open this.
Yeah, so that's, that's my resolution, that's why I'm doing it.
First of all, we're gonna have two components. The first is, I'll open it up for discussion on the floor, that these questions will be to, uh, whereas clauses only. And then after you get done questioning the whereat, then I'll open it up for comments that could affect the vote.
Thank you.
So, please raise your hand, and then, because we, we don't wanna debate here. We, uh, we got too much time, Chair. So, raise your hand, and I'll refer you to the question as to the whereas clause. Any questions? Mr. Olson. If you speak right to Chris.
Well. I guess I'd like to request if we could just get a picture of, of the room upstairs to see how many people actually stayed, that the, the chairman asked if they could stay or not. Uh, to the first whereas clause of significant fear. Significant fear is being created by activists throughout the county and outside of the county, um, all across the state and country, actually. And, and that's what we hear tonight. It's, it's fear, 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 and. Go back to FDR, I believe it was in nineteen thirty-three, said, there's nothing to fear but fear itself. Um. I fear something that I don't understand. Any person, there, we, we hear over and over that there's, we don't want a capoe coming to Polk County. We've got five of them. We've had capoes in Polk Counties for years and years and years.
There's five, five capoes grandfathered into Polk County.
Yeah. And, and, and we don't hear any problems of, of them, but nobody seems to know they exist. I've had numerous phone calls of saying, don't let a capoe in, well, we have five. No, you don't. Yes, we do. We've had them for years.
Right.
Um, and, and there is almost no capoe out there that would not. Welcome people to come on in a tour and show them their farm. So, simply go get educated.
That's a good discussion on the first where.
What do you wanna do, remove the word fear?
No, I don't wanna remove fear.
Oh.
Unfounded fear.
Beautiful questions to Chris as to the whereas clause.
I have a question. I had a friendly amendment, or an amendment. At the appropriate time now?
We'll have, I'll open up for comment.
I'll wait then.
Any other questions to any of the whereas clause? I think you did a very good, very good job. Okay, now I'll open up for comments, and that can come about anything that could affect the vote because. The main purposes is there's so much propaganda or comments or whatever out there, and we're trying to clear up and move forward as to really how the board. Uh, feels that, uh, we wanna move forward with. I have one comment, and I, I think I gotta bring this up, uh, on the Wisconsin Counties Association. Bayfield County had two, uh, resolutions, one passed and one didn't. And the one that did not pass was they had a resolution to limit all capoes. And, uh, that was defeated unanimously. I don't think there was any vote for it. There were two, Bayfield County voted, and one other one out of the seventy-two counties. And that would, that would have eliminated just about any animal units over seven hundred, and it's. Those are the, those are the companies' farms that feed the world. And the, uh, attorney, our county's attorney was there. He said, in fact, that would have been. They took it off.
Amy, you could make an amendment right now if that's what you wanted to do.
Are we done with this discussion?
Yeah, open for comments.
Um, I have just, I can pass this out if people need, um. I actually don't have any problems with the whereat, the, the therefore be resolved. Thought that it's what we're trying to do.
How's you doing, Senator? Any comments? Anybody got any comments for capoes? There's, there's a lot of things out there, anybody wanna make something affirmative?
Just help that, that the conditional use. We could put any conditions on it, so I mean, we can make more studies for everything. That's why we did do it that way in our committee. Because the conditions could be unlimited. And every time that there's new stuff coming up. That can be used as a condition, so these are all site-specific, you know, we don't know if, if, if one came and tried to be in Farmington or Sterling or wherever, that's where the study would be then. We can't study the whole county.
I think that's important for the press to get this out right, too. Again, I know I'm picking on the press a little bit, but you got, you, you gotta, you gotta share the whole story. What does a conditional permit do for our communities?
The conditions that we could put on there could be pretty stringent.
I know it's not sensational, but it's, it's the facts.
And then the studies have to be site-specific. You can't take and water monitor Sterling, and then they come and put it in Farmington. Wouldn't make much sense.
Right.
And so they want all these studies, but.
I think.
Land and Water is doing watershed once now.
The condition, and like you said, the conditions can be, whatever the committee wants to put.
Thank you, every comment.
I'd just like to say, help me out here with my timeline.
Sure.
But we created these conditional use permits.
Yep.
And they got sent to DACAP. And they, DACAP sent back that they're all, they are all under, unforcible. Unenforceable. And also.
What, what's, what can, what are you talking about?
Conditional uses.
Not all.
The ones they said, they couldn't do it because DACAP only does site. They only regulates.
Site.
Site. They can't, so those.
The one condition in there.
Yeah.
Was that they couldn't spread manure closer than a thousand feet. And Chad said that's not true. You can, Bob's right here, you can spread right up to the, to the water line.
Sure, so that.
Sure, see, that's okay.
That's pretty, that particular condition would not be legal then. Right, right. There's, there's some conditions that you would consider illegal.
The state overrides them.
But there's some conditions you can.
But your county is CUP process that they pull the, the portions of it. They don't agree with, are not legal, but they're still in there anyway.
We're not gonna have a debate. Now, Michael, did you have a?
Well, I had a question. Uh. My recollection was when we approved the conditional use provision relating to capoe. It was with the understanding that there would be further study given to the capoe issue. Studies.
And that, I believe, is when, uh, uh, Jim Jones, that, that right first name Jones is that, came up from Baldwin.
Jackson.
Jackson, correct. Thank you for correcting me. And he explained to the whole, uh, county board, and I wish the press would have been there to get that straight, and he said, he has a. Every farmer has to have a plan for every acre that they have.
Will you finish? If I could continue.
All right, go ahead.
Think this was after. Or is, but, uh, conditional use provision was opted by. My recollection was. Thought that was the specific understanding that work which was underway of looking at. Possible other regulation of capoes at the county level would continue on, and my question was whether I'm wrong in that recollection or not, and. If, if I'm right, if that has continued on, or has been completed, or there's been any other.
I don't wanna have a, will somebody have an answer?
Are you talking about the, we were supposed to, we, we took that vote that night, and then we were supposed to continue on discussing an operation ordinance, and it moved to Health and Human, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, I am.
Yeah. And that was shut down. Executive made a decision to pull it and stop work on capoes entirely, and then it came up here, and that vote passed. So it, we never got to go through that process, we never got to go through any exploratory, we never really got to answer the question about whether an operation ordinance.
Amy, do you wanna, excuse me, but you wanna continue on with your description that you passed out?
Okay, should we go back to the motion on the floor?
Right.
Thank you. Okay. So my motion would be to take lines, uh, twenty-two and twenty-three. And strike those, and then insert the, a new whereas. Whereas Ashland, Bayfield, and Douglas Counties have all passed livestock operation ordinances to protect public health and property values because of public concerns about the effectiveness of existing capoe laws. And regulations as well as insufficient state oversight. I would need a second.
As per, we have a motion and a second, call for discussion. I would question myself whether you should actually list the names of those three counties. There is some opinions of do what's legal and what isn't legal, but that was just my comment on that part of it, so. For discussion.
I had to, I had to list them to tie it to the large livestock operation ordinance. And the whole legal thing, I mean, everything is, you know, whether it's legal or illegal in this world of litigation, anything can be challenged, so.
Uh.
I have a question. So why would you strike whereas clause twenty-two and twenty-three? I heard that brought up at public comment, so that gentleman must have known that was part of the strategy.
I'm actually.
And it's just, it's just ironic that it happened, but. Whereas local government units, particularly counties, are statutorily limited in their ability to regulate capoes. My question is, the attorney into Bob, is that whereas clause inaccurate? Is that, is that not a correct statement, that Joe? Are we, are we limited? In our ability, uh, Bob, are we limited in our ability to regulate capoes? That's a yes or no?
Well, we are if we're species-specific.
Sure, so we are limited. Okay. That's right, that was the only point I wanted to get out there. Why would you wanna remove that?
I was, what, what I was thinking is, um, I'm not super well about removing it, but I, what I wanted to make the point here is. Like, I think we're limiting ourselves more than we need to by not looking at the operation ordinance.
What if I even talking about your second one? I'm just asking you why.
That's, so that's why. Let me finish. So that was why, 'cause I wanted to, I wanted us to not imply that, oh, we're the county, we really are limited, we can't do anything.
I'm gonna ask the council for a opinion on, uh, a town or county or government cannot be more restrictive than the state, is that correct?
Question is, the town cannot, or town, county.
Any comment is, uh, nothing can be more restrictive than the state.
Yes. Correct. If I'm understanding your question. State has a set of restrictions. Our county is only allowed to do a certain number of things.
Within that state guideline or statute or whatever.
Right.
Correct. Does anybody understand? That is a position that the public, like out in front and up here, does not understand. They think the county can do anything, and we can't. We gotta be within the state.
Well, that's, that's why it was put in there.
For the press, for the press.
The council was.
But our council just said.
That was very important, that was very important to me, to have that in there.
You can just add then.
With that strike.
Leave it in.
Leave yours in and, and add a second.
I have a question. Okay. My question would be, Amy, in reference to Ashland, Bayfield, Douglas Counties have passed livestock operations. What do we know their effect, what do we know about their? What do we know their effect? What do we know about their impact? I mean.
Well, I mean, everything on the book, I mean, every, anything on the books is challengeable legally.
And. I certainly understand that.
And they, they.
I wouldn't refer to them.
Because those guys have operation work versus a CUP. So they took the next step. They went to the next level.
Well, I guess, Amy, I would, I would ask you, what is the main point or, uh, what is the, uh?
My main point.
I'm not going to accomplish.
My main point is to say that counties actually do have more, um, authority and ability to protect public health, property values, water, air than we have sort of embraced. And I'm fine with taking, keeping your whereas and adding the second whereas.
I'm not sure that that's in line, but that would be up to you.
They're both there. You wanted to load it on as one.
Brad Olson, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, but then that ordinance has gone over and above what the state allows. The, the Bayfield, that's, we know that because realistically, we took the Eureka ordinance, which is the Bayfield ordinance. Struck Eureka, added swine only, sent it to DAT cap. And we're the only county or, or town whoever has went far enough to say, okay, here DAT cap, here's state of Wisconsin, regular jury agencies. Do you approve of this? Bayfield, Ashland, and Douglas did not send them to the state. So they have no clue if they're legal. They can say they're not because you have to have an affected party. Ashland upped their animal units to twenty-five hundred, knowing full well that they would never have a, a farm in, in Ashland County that had more than twenty-five hundred animals. If Pol County passes the Bayfield ordinance and says, let's put it at twenty-five thousand animals, it will never be challenged. It'll always be legal because no one will ever get that big.
I'm not saying twenty-five thousand.
Any other comments on the amendment that's on the floor? Doc?
I'm just going back to what Brad said because Bayfield was sent to DAT cap.
Correct.
I talked to Bayfield on the phone, or to DAT cap on the phone, and he said he found one sentence that was troubling. That's all he could find. So it's never been tested. And just to say, well, it's illegal, he didn't call it illegal. And that's the DAT cap person.
Comment. Uh, can you, one more comment? That, that would be it.
Oh, no, I'm just wondering, um, property values. How do, how do we know they're affected? Because I personally know that property is sold right next to the proposed site in Grantsburg for ordinance. I'm not sure how we know that.
Well, we, what this is referring to is of course not property values that a CAFO company is coming in to buy. It's referring to the property values of the, um, homeowners that are affected by odor and water quality and well, well, that's the piece that that's about.
We don't know if.
Well, we do know that.
One is, uh, Madam Burke, do you want to have a, I'm going to call for a roll call vote for Amy's amendment. Yes would be for her amendment and, uh, no would be, uh, name to the amendment and we would go on.
I may, we have to have discussion on this. We're not, we have not discussed this enough to be competent enough to vote.
Well, I asked for any more comments and I didn't, I'm not cutting you off.
We're, we need, there's more discussion.
If you have discussion, go ahead and.
We don't have discussion, but I can see that there's others that there could be a potential for discussion. We don't know. We're inserting.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear no more.
Inserting Amy's, the leading part of Chris's, we have not even come to that realization.
Open on the floor for discussion.
So I'm just saying.
Let's clarify what exactly it is that we would be voting on so we all understand.
Now it's the amendments that Amy's offering.
So my, I can, uh, how do I, I don't know how exactly I can change mine.
You made a motion to amend, to strike and to add a single amendment to an amendment can be made by motions. Second, vote on the amendment to the amendment and then you vote on the amendment.
So if I can change my amendment?
Otherwise.
Did she pull her amendment back?
Otherwise, we can have a vote on the amendment as you proposed it. Have that get struck down potentially, depending on what people want to do. And then if it gets struck down, if someone else proposed an amendment that doesn't strike that language and instead just inserts the language that you proposed, and then that would be a new amendment.
We can't just do that all at once. So have me do a friendly amendment on top of myself?
Again, we can. So you can move to amend your amendment to, instead of striking that language, leave that language in. That would have to be seconded and then there would be a vote on that.
That seems faster than or easier. Okay, I, I'm, I'm going to, Chair, can I make a?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to strike my motion where the, um, lines twenty-two and twenty-three are taken out and leave them in and insert the second one. Uh, second whereas, starting with Ashland, Bayfield, Douglas. Sunset stays, the resolution stays the same and there's just a new whereas.
I have a second. Have a motion and a second now discussion or questions on what presented.
Amy, just to be clear, you're putting back in whereas local governments?
Yep, keeping lines twenty-two and twenty-three.
Inserting Bayfield.
Yep.
Starting with.
Am I correct in where you originally had the striking of those two? Are you just putting that in? Is that correct, Amy? Where in your first amendment, you were striking two lines?
Yep.
And now the second amendment, you're putting those back in?
Yep.
Any more discussion on the amendment to the amendment, which is legal? Call for a roll call, uh, I voice vote on it. All in favor of the amendment to the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Aye. Uh, the amendment to the amendment is passed. Now we'll go back to the original amendment. Any more discussion on her original amendment?
Of a change to incorporate the original language from.
And those two lines will stay in on this, Mr. Counsel, correct?
Right.
Correct. Any more, I'll ask three times. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? We'll call for a roll call vote on the amendment, which includes the amendment to the amendment.
What are we voting on, Chair?
Amy's amendment.
Okay, that's what we're voting on now. Just be inserted now. Oh, I got.
The guess, my guess would be to pass Amy's amendment.
With the whereas Ashland, Bayfield, Douglas counties, that piece we're voting on. Are we going to add this to this resolution?
That is accurate.
I got you.
Not removing twenty-two and.
Right, okay. Roll call vote, correct.
He middle.
Yes.
Hey Luke. Russ Arkham. Emily.
Oh.
Ed Olson.
No.
Legrody.
Yes.
Chris Nelson.
No.
Fliplock.
No.
It's Richard.
Yes.
Karen Kelly.
I got a. You missed some.
The amendment.
Did you? Oh, Jim, I'm sorry.
I couldn't get out of it. No.
Nine five.
The amendment failed, is that correct? Mr. Chair, you want to resume the chair?
No, I don't know. We haven't voted on, there may be another amendment. Is there anyone else that?
I have an amendment, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, proceed.
You betcha.
Here's the book. I only had a page.
Ask, ask environmental services when I get time to do study homework.
Go out hunting.
Yeah, I do this, this was coming. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Russ.
You need to take more time. Take your notebook along. You're supposed to have a gun or whatever. Not a notebook.
You.
I don't even want to.
Oh, we sent it to him. So we get out of here.
Everyone take them.
It's like a novel.
You got one down here.
Obviously. Isn't he out by now?
Okay, uh, Mr. Olson, you have the floor to explain your amendment.
Do we need a motion to have it?
I'll make a motion to bring this to the floor.
Second thing?
Yes.
Madam Clerk? Have that, okay. Open for discussion.
Well, it's nice to hear everybody talk about water quality because as, as a farmer, we get beat up all the time for water quality. Simply all this resolution does is strikes regarding CAFO regulations. The title and adds municipal sewer runoff and highway road salt. Um, we hear about pollution all the time. First page, simply agriculture spills, which has been in Pol County and the northern.
Excuse me, excuse me, Supervisor Olson, there was red lines on the bottom too that you didn't talk about. The need for the resolve.
Mr. Press, do you have a copy of this? Are you reading here?
Yep.
Thank you.
So, so the third whereas clause simply adds that none of this changes and the whereas are now therefore be resolved. None of it changes any of the wording that's there. Simply, simply adds municipal sewer runoff and highway road salt runoff during the winter. To third whereas clause and the last is resolved.
You know, simply, what is the last resolved clause? What is that doing?
Just adds other sources of groundwater and air quality such as municipal sewer and runoff, salt runoff from roads on highways for the state to look at more closely. Uh, as far as road salt and if you flip to the third page, in twenty nineteen, Pol County polluted with what they sold, what they used on state and county highways and what sold to towns just short of twelve billion gallons of water toxic levels. Um, city of St. Croix Falls in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, um, averaged just short of half a billion gallons a year. Count of Osceola, hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy-six thousand gallons polluted water a year. All I'm asking is county board consider that there really is more to this issue than CAFOs. We pollute water at a ferocious pace, uh, through, throughout county and the state. Um, municipal overflows, hundred and fifty million gallons in eighteen, three hundred and sixty-one million gallons in nineteen statewide. Milwaukee alone puts one point two billion gallons in in twenty eighteen to Lake Michigan. Just in the last two weeks, Milwaukee dumped three hundred and eighty million gallons into Lake Michigan, Kinnick River and surrounding. All I'm saying is we have people come every month and say, it's CAFOs, it's CAFOs, it's CAFOs. Say, right, agriculture is part of the problem. Agriculture is a small part of the problem. It gets all the blame and is asked to fix the entire problem. Um, last page is, is, is simply a graph from a non-agriculture friendly outfit that shows rural greenhouse gas emissions. Agriculture is at point eight of one percent while heat, electricity and transportation combined are ten percent higher than that. So if we're going to worry about agriculture polluting groundwater, air quality, maybe we should worry about transportation and we should worry about road salt and we should worry about cities dumping sewers, their sewers into the waters of Wisconsin. Can you imagine if a dairy farm dumped that amount of manure into the St. Croix River every day and polluted that much pollution? They'd be screaming to no end. And that's, that's all I'm saying is asking for us to amend this resolution to say, yes, there is other sources of pollution other than agriculture. Or like most of the people who are upstairs outside and some in this room, it's all an agriculture issue.
How many are upstairs?
Yeah, I'm moving the floor up for discussion as to the whereas clause.
I know Supervisor Olson asked to see what the room had. Is there anyone there? No one's there.
No one. Jim? Well, he has sewer runoff. We probably should change that wording to sewer discharge, storm sewer runoff. They're two different. It could be both. It could be. And he has both in his, in his.
Other than.
You have both here. So I mean sewer discharge and storm sewer discharge.
Other than, other than the city of Milwaukee, it is just sewer discharge.
Okay. Is that why it's storm sewer too? I'm just saying that to maybe make.
And that's why, that's why Milwaukee.
Hey Louis. I have a question.
Don't you think?
I understand what you're saying. So in, in other words, what you're trying, what you're, reason that you're bringing this up then would be to defeat this.
Oh, no.
Then do you want us to, uh, resolve that we cut out all salt on our roads?
No, I'm just, all I'm saying is that do we acknowledge that it, that it's a pollution?
It says resolve.
Yeah, but that they, no different than they, they fund those agencies.
We need to adequately monitor and regulate CAFOs and other sources. No groundwater, air quality, municipal sewer runoff, salt runoff. So we've got to monitor that now.
Yes. And, 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 well, I don't know, the, the city of St. Croix Falls dumps all of their, their snow right above the St. Croix River in the White Spark, so it all runs downhill. All I'm saying is, is the county board willing to acknowledge other pollution happen?
Okay, I'm going to ask for the council for clarification. It would, would this be a legal addition to the, uh, original amendment?
Because it is a lobbying resolution and because it doesn't substantially change the subject of the resolution, I think it, the only issue would be that it violates open meetings law and I don't think that this changes it so substantively that it would, um, even if it passed. So I, I don't think that there is any legal bar to.
So we can act on this resolution?
If the board were to pass this amendment to the resolution, I don't think that would be, uh, prohibited by the open meeting.
Yeah.
Malita, Malita room.
Yeah. Andrew.
Yeah, I got it. You know, I'm, I guess, when I look at the top, because we're urging the state of Wisconsin adequately fund state agencies regarding CAFO regulations, you struck that. You said you weren't striking nothing, but you did strike that.
Yep, and that was on advice preparation council because the only way to make it, to leave CAFOs in there was to extend the title of the resolution. An extreme, um, public triple the size of the, of the name of the resolution.
That was my thought too. It's like, you're.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My intent was, was because this, this, I get it, you know, I personally have no problem with you adding the other contaminants. You know, we should be worried about sewer runoffs and highway road salt. I don't see a problem worrying about that.
That's your comment?
But I guess I have a problem with removing CAFO regulations because the intent of this was listening to the public comments every month. You know, no one's showing up here saying, hey, I got a problem with road salt. You know, I get your point is trying to, to say, hey, I'm not the only one in here. I just, if, if we could, the other stuff, I guess I don't have a problem with, but the top part I do have a problem. Because I'm trying to hear the public too. And the, the state currently does regulate CAFOs and the intent was this, of this order, or this resolution, hurry. I believe striking that out of there changes the intent of the resolution. Adding some other things in there I don't see as. But to me, the whole definition and the reason I did this was to, but it's about CAFO regulations and that we want the state, the DNR, I heard from even CAFO farmers saying, we need that agency to be funded better because I'm tired of having my application done, waiting till the last week to get, hey, yep, it's been approved, your renewal is approved. And they do all the paperwork and they wait, they wait, and they wait. And then the state gives them the paperwork at the very last minute. And the guy says, you know, that's a hassle. And the guy says, you know, that's a hassle. You know, you know you're going to be renewed. We have no problems.
Would, would you want to remove part of your?
That's, that's, that's the only problem I have with it. I just wanted to share that with you. I won't support this amendment because of removing that title.
Would you want to remove that whereas?
But you can vote on it. It's going to be voted on.
It's not the whereas, it's the, it's the. It's, it's in the title.
Yeah.
Amy, did you have another?
I have the exact same comment, actually.
Randy, do you have a comment?
I have, I have a comment.
This is. I'm holding to where I am, but go ahead. We'll open it for comments.
Just a question I have is municipal sewer runoff, municipal sewer runoff, well, in the city of Amory, you can drink.
This is over.
So, you're so clean, you can drink it before it's an apple.
How often do you drink it?
I have been drinking it. And most municipal, in defense of municipalities, most municipal sewer runoff is highly treated before it's ever discharged into anything. So, I just want to make that point.
Not, not if it overflows, because Milwaukee just dumped last week 380 gallon, million gallon untreated.
All in Ashland, same thing.
Right. So, it isn't, it isn't.
It's the same.
Chairman, I, I think, you know, I, I think this is a, a good idea, basically, to petition, basically. The state make a better look at some of the polluting factors in this, in this, however, in our state. However, the intent of this particular resolution that, as it was presented, was to make, bring the attention to CAFOs that we are being inundated with. I think by adding all of these things, we're taking the emphasis, emphasis of CAFOs away from our intent to bring their attention. And once they see all of this, they say, well, that's admirable, however, nice try, so long. You know, they're, they're not going to address all of these things, and it, it would be an effort in futility to even send them something to brought and intents of the polluting problems that we've got in the state and take it away from the CAFO intent at this.
And I agree, Chair, that, I would like to echo Luke. I, I think what we should do then is bring another resolution next month on these other issues and not tie it to this one, but that's.
Hey, Tim, did you have a comment?
I want to do an amendment, then, so let's get, move this forward. Partake and not have it struck.
Are you making an amendment to the amendment?
Right. What's the amendment now?
It's on, it's on the hall.
Or what's, what's there?
I could have made an amendment to his.
Yeah.
Denial, not strike the regard CAFO regulations in, in the title. And where municipal sewer runoff should say, should say municipal sewer discharge in both line 13 and line 42. Shouldn't say runoff, it should say discharge, so they know that.
Madam Clerk, do you have those?
It's a field but resolution.
Well, I think that answers the question. Chris and Brad, doesn't it?
Yeah, I can live.
I'm going to vote against it, so I can live with it.
Call it, Chris.
Oh, no.
He put it back, yeah.
Only, well, I suppose, but I agree with, I agree. While there's discussion going on right now, Chair, I'm going to agree with Jay. I believe we're watering this down. The intent was.
That's their job to do this anyway. It's just exam.
No, that's fine. I'm just, I'm just saying I, I think this is watering down the resolution.
Okay, first of all, I need a second on Tim's motion for an amendment to the amendment. Okay. Second by Brad. And we've had discussion. Any more discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote on the amendment, Tim's amendment.
Would you go through and change the amendment one more time, so I can, would you vote, could you give the change to the amendment?
Madam Clerk?
So, the title, not strike the CAFO every, title. Then, line items.
Discharge.
Only, so it's line 13 sewer runoff gets changed to sewer discharge.
Right.
And line 42 sewer runoff gets changed to sewer discharge. Salt runoff continues to be salt runoff on both line 42 and line 14.
Yeah.
As it's right. The only changes are to the title.
The word discharge.
And the discharge word in those two spots.
Yes.
That's Kim's amendment to the amendment.
Any other questions before we call for, I'll call for a roll call vote. Yes is in favor of Tim's amendment to Brad's amendment.
Start with Jay Luke. And Duncanson. Russ Arkand. Tom Botticelli.
Yes.
Joe Dumbling.
Yes.
Edel.
Yes.
Doug Brody.
Oh, no. Oh.
Buck. No.
Yes.
Mike Pritchard.
Oh.
Aaron Kelly.
No.
O'Connell.
Yes.
Justice and eight, no.
Amendment to the amendment fails. Now, we will vote on the Brad Olson as presented, that he passed around. Happy. A yes is in favor of Brad's amendment, no would be nay. And a roll call vote.
Brad Duncanson. Russ Arkand.
Oh.
Botticelli.
Oh.
Joe Dumbling.
No.
Edel. Doug Brody.
No.
Nelson. No.
No.
Mike Pritchard.
No.
Kelly.
No.
O'Connell.
No.
E. Milton.
No.
Luke.
No.
Who wants to make a roll call?
Appreciate the discussion, Supervisor Olson, though.
The original amendment fails. Now, we'll get back to Chris's original amendment. Mr. Counsel?
Right now, we're still in open for debate and/or motions to amend, unless someone wants to call the debate.
I'm going to call for the vote.
Off the question, any roll call vote, please? Any clarity now?
What we want? Resolution.
The actual.
Yeah, we took a resolution.
Chris Nelson's resolution that he presented, a vote, a yes on his resolution, okay, nay is negative.
Start with Russ Arkand.
Yes.
Botticelli.
Yes.
Joe Dumbling.
Yes.
Doug Brody.
No.
Nelson.
Yes.
Jacy LaPont. Andrew.
Yes.
Mike Pritchard.
Yes.
Kelly. O'Connell.
Yes.
E. Milton.
Yes.
Luke.
Yes.
Brad Duncanson. One, no, and thirteen, yes.
That resolution is passed. Chair, you all.
You can stand there if you want, Sean.
Well, what have we got left? Twenty-three, forty, twenty-one. Twenty C, Resolution forty, twenty-one, amend the illegal transport of aquatic plants, invasive animals ordinance. Who wants to speak on that?
We make the motion first, or we speak first?
All I think was, all I think was stated.
Second to the floor.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion for adoption by Doug Rowdy, second by Joe Dumbling. Discussion?
Please, Mr. Chairman.
Got the floor.
I was at a Bone Lake, Lake meeting, and they want to put in a, a decontamination station, but Polk County has no ordinance enforcing decontamination stations. So, they would like to have enforcement for the money they're going to spend to put in the station. And that's what they've asked, and then when we had a vote at the annual meeting, that was unanimous out of 75 people and 25 on, on the screen. So, that's where this originated, and if we, Burnett County and Barron County and Washburn County and, I think, maybe St. Croix County, they all have this, this change in their ordinance, so there's enforcement. Because they have started putting in decontamination stations, and that's, that's about the gist of it. Want any more?
No, that's right, because that's, that's.
I commend you and, and those people for bringing this up. I mean, we need to have these controlled because you can't even take wood from one place to another.
Olson Lake wants to do the same thing, so.
I'll bet you all support this. Um, up in, uh, Darren, uh, they have stations that DNR goes around with, different lakes at different time. And because they are such of an expensive unit, because you got the three phases you gotta go through for spraying and stuff, and so, you're a bit thick.
Good comment. Chair.
I was at the Deer Lake Conservancy meeting Saturday, and they said they'd been talking to the folks at Land and Water, but there, the consensus there was just the opposite. They've tried to have things there like brushes for people to clean their boat. They steal them. They steal them. We've got high school kids that are hired down there to sit there during the day when boats are coming and going to remind people to do that. But they did not feel that, that they were, these high school kids were the people, were the right ones to be telling people, you need to use that or taking pictures of their boats or their license or whatever. They were concerned about enforcement. How are they going to enforce it?
It's just something that it's added to the tension. I represent the Big Lake, those three lakes, and good part of their budget is to hire people there at both on Big Lake Landing.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Bob, did you have any comments on this, or the committee chair?
Caitlin Anderson's talked twice at our meeting.
Yeah.
And Colton, and there is no, they're, they're not asking any high school kids to tell them they're doing something wrong. And they, that was specific in their, this is enforcement by the county and the DNR, other.
I got a question, Chair.
Go ahead.
So, so what does someone do? They call the Sheriff's Department up and say, hey, a guy's taken off here and he didn't wipe his boat down?
They had, they said that they would.
Who does?
Well, they're not sure yet. You know, this is all new, because we don't even have it.
Anybody standing there can say that. Yeah.
That's what the Conservancy was questioning.
I'm going to have the sheriff watch, address the floor.
Several landings have camera systems, and then they send us the photos to if something's like in violation.
Big Lake has that.
Yeah. We work with Lake Association, and it's.
It's working progress.
Really not too much of a burden at this time.
Okay.
Any more? Yeah.
The reality is, probably, as you talk about a county and something that could require some funding, the zebra mussel's been present now, particularly Deer Lake. They're worried about the transportation to our other lakes. We may end up with stations at all of these lakes, and if we're looking at someplace to put money, beautification of the, of the lakes in our area, that might be one we should consider as a project, put in those stations, because we're not going to stop it now. It's, it's already coming. We're, we're going to have to do what we can to keep it from moving forward.
Joe, do you have a comment?
Yes, um, that's the problem Cedar Lake is having right now, because they get, only when, when the river is so high, they can't go, so then they come to these other lakes. And they're so afraid that they're going to be bringing in zebra mussel. And they got the residents that put all the stuff out to make sure that, you know, they check them all the time to see if they have it.
That is the denominator, zebra.
And so far, they haven't, but that's one of the things, because all these Minnesota people.
Do you have a comment?
What they're doing, too, is, is they, they want that they have the signage. So, we've looked forward at, at eight boat landings that Polk County owns, that the, the signage would be there.
Any more discussion before I call for a motion? Hearing none, more to call for a voice vote on Resolution forty, twenty-one. Forty, twenty-one. All in favor of the resolution, say aye. Foes, motion carried. Moving on, General Government Committee, Resolution twenty-seven, twenty-one.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. Thirty, thirty-seven, twenty-one, correction. Uh, committee chair?
This is, this is just a budget amendment. What has, uh, transpired is the sheriff's office received a grant through COVID funding to purchase a body scanner for the jail. It's a device that helps detect contraband and weapons on or about a person. The grant is a reimbursement, requires $150,000 outlay from the county, and then the grant is for $150,000 reimbursed by the state. However, requires an adjustment to the 2021 budget, uh, it's a, an expense that later gets reimbursed. So, this is an amendment requiring a two-thirds of vote. The body scanner is 100% covered by the grant, 100% reimbursed.
Case our committee chair, uh.
I'll make comments. Approve that. Oh.
As of now, there is no, uh, body cameras in Polk County.
It's a body scanner. It's similar to what you see in the airport when you go through the airport.
Yeah. Replace the one that's there.
There, there.
There's one.
They're almost.
Oh, they are extremely essential.
For all kinds of reasons.
Anybody that works in the, in our, our traditional building over there, they're, they're standing on feathers. They're scared. Tim?
You should probably have a roll call, because it takes two thirds. Call over.
Uh, Madam Clerk? Amy? Had that put away for the night.
It did, yeah.
Yes.
Joe Dumbling.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Doug Brody.
Yes.
Paul. Jacy LaPont.
Yes.
Mike Pritchard.
Yes.
O'Connell.
Yes.
E. Milton.
Yes.
Brad Duncanson. Russ Arkand.
Yes.
And I can say that, you know, right. Uh, last thing, any, and take your time for this one. Any comments from any supervisor, what's happening in the district or county or whatever?
Yeah.
Everybody get their flyer for, uh, Dairy, Professional Dairy Production, producers, Tuesday, August 26th. Is, uh, one of Polk County's at Pinklewood Incorporated.
That was passed out all around the state when I was down to the Wisconsin counties.
Everybody get one in the mail.
Passed out all around the state. Good luck for Polk County.
Thank you.
Mike Pritchard.
Just, uh, Russ Hansen made available his history of the 1886 Polk County fairgrounds, and it's in your bail box, too.
Russ Hansen is a great authority. When we had discussion on the grandstand, he brought all pictures and data and everything in from beginning of Polk County that he could research. Andy, you have something?
Very, very active, and he's worked, he hopes to come out with a definitive history, but he's writing a weekly column for the leader on the subject. I just.
Any other supervisor meeting you attended? Amy?
I did the ARP, uh, ARDC meeting. It's kind of budget season for them. We're not doing PTAG this month because we're, the consultants are finishing up the survey. Encourage your people. We have until, uh, next week, the 20th, to do the survey. And then I got a call, we all got a public comment on, on the kinship funding piece, and I got a call on that of concern that, why was it cut? And, um, I don't know, we should revisit that. And I don't know, we should revisit that. Do I follow up with you on that, or how do I?
You can follow up with me and the, and, and our legal counsel. We're doing that right now. And, and obviously that letter was sent out, they, they actually were tipped off a while ago, but we'll look at it again. We just can't do anything illegal.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd be remiss if I didn't comment on the work of our staff in Polk County. I attended five Wisconsin Counties Association Steering Committee meetings in Stevens Point, and our staff, I presented 10 resolutions that the staff in Polk County has presented, nine of them passed, and then I told you about the one on CAFO data, or, excuse me, drug data that was sent back to the Board of Directors. I, all, all of the resolutions I've had on, have given to the clerk in Polk, all of the public. Thanks again to the staff. I don't ever remember anywhere near 10 resolutions. That's really, really great part of our staff.
Supervisor Olson, you okay?
He's right. Till he gets in his right.
Any other comments?
I'm calling for a three and a half hours late. Snow for a German.
Motion by Dumling and Pritchard. I, aye. Thank you.